Good morning, everyone. Good morning to all those in attendance and to all those that are following us online. Welcome to the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry Regular Meeting of Council, today being Monday, December nineteenth. Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor Broad, that the meeting of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
Do we have a mover?
Through you, it's moved by Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor Broad.
All those in favor, opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Madam Clerk, the adoption of the agenda, please.
Moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor St Pierre, that council approve the agenda.
All those in favor, opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Before we move on any further, ladies and gentlemen, a few housekeeping notes. There is a lunch today served by the social committee, the Christmas lunch, and that takes place at noon hour for the sake of being able to get through today's meeting and have a lunch. Brevity will be the key to this meeting, and maybe to future meetings, but just to ensure that we're able to have lunch at noon hour. The other note is that at some point in the agenda, just before we get to six point three transportation, we'll be taking a five-minute break to stretch our legs. And I believe that's all there is, unless there's something I've forgotten, Madam Clerk. No, thank you. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof, seeing none. Madam Clerk, adoption of the minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Laundrie, seconded by Counselor McGillis, that the minutes of the meetings, including the in-camera minutes of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry, held October seventeenth, November twenty-first and December second, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted as circulated.
We've all heard the question, all those in favor, opposed, seeing none, that's Today, we have two delegations. We have OPP detachment commander Hemmerich, and then from the St Lawrence River Institute, we have Dr. Jeff Radell, the executive director, Dr. Brian Hickey, the program leader for education, and we'll start off our first delegation with Inspector Hemmerich. Inspector, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, members of council. I did not get to speak at your inauguration, but I'd like to welcome everybody to this session of council and congratulate everybody on your election or reelection. We certainly look forward to working with you and continuing the outstanding relationship the OPP has always had with the United Counties and its council. Today, I will be, or we will, I would like to present Angel Cannell, who is the outpatient manager of clinical services for the Cornwall Community Hospital. We will be presenting to council on the Mobile Crisis Response Team and our request for a funding continuance, and also for that funding continuance to be made over a, or we'll be seeking a long-term commitment from county council, moving it forward. So we will start, I will be starting the presentation with a brief overview of the Mobile Crisis Response Team. So for those of you that are new to council or that have not heard this presentation, if I go a little fast, my apologies, it can be a little lengthy. For those of you that have heard this, heard this presentation before, it is going a little quicker for your benefit, and I hope that those of you around the table that are very familiar and have supported the program in the past will be able to, will be able to fill in some of the gaps for your colleagues if I leave some questions on the table, and hence, we would like to leave some time for questions on, for questions afterwards. So the Mobile Crisis Response Team is a partnership between the Cornwall Community Hospital and the Ontario Provincial Police. There are several models which are all across the province, but the most popular one you will see throughout the province is called the Mobile Crisis Response Team. It is the ministry's preferred term and preferred model for the collaboration between mental health professionals and the police. Our program has been in place since two thousand and twenty, and we, we very strongly live by the mantra, when persons of mental illness in the community are in crisis, neither police nor mental health system alone can serve them effectively, and it is essential for the two systems to work closely together. So previous to two thousand and twenty, there was no collaboration, or there was some collaboration between the mental health services available within our area and the police. But oftentimes, what occurred was that collaboration occurred when someone was having any type of mental health crisis or mental health problem, their de facto was to dial nine-one-one, and the police were left with very, very limited options, because we are left with very limited options because of the Mental Health Act, which were essentially apprehend and take them to the hospital and see what happens, or leave them at home or, and see what happens. Neither one of them was a good, neither one of them was a good option. Now, there are certain circumstances where apprehension is still absolutely necessary, there are dangers to, there are dangers to the person or dangers to the public, and we must bring them to a mental health facility. There are no questions, this program does not apply. However, it is all those other situations where this program becomes so valuable. So once again, an overview, the purpose of the Mobile Crisis Response Team is to ensure that the residents of the Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry have a better health and well-being while receiving the most appropriate and helpful community-based crisis response at the right time in the right places. For us in this program, when people dial nine-one-one, or they call our non-emergency number, or they, another community agency which we often get makes a referral either through the hospital or to the police, this allows us to dispatch our team, which is made up of one or multiple police officers, plus a mental health clinician from the hospital, that can be a nurse, a social worker, or something, something else that the hospital deems appropriate, and they will respond to live calls for service. So they will, they will actually go to that call for service, our frontline patrol officers will ensure it's safe before they go, and then they will go and the mental health professional that is working with the officer will go and make an assessment of that person's needs directly on site. So the proposed investment that we are asking from council and the goals are always to improve access to mental health care, improve the quality of care, and improve resident experience. I can tell you that we are now coming into our third year of the program, and every year the program has run, we have only seen greater efficiencies, but more importantly, we have only seen greater, our expectations met year over year over year. We are extremely proud of this program. I just finished town halls with my entire detachment of a hundred and twenty-four people. I did ten town halls. When I surveyed them and asked them, what was the, if we had to lose one thing in the, in the, in our current system, the way we look, bottom of the list was the M-CERT program. They all said one hundred percent unequivocally that that is the one thing that they would not give up, because they find it such a valuable asset, not just for removing calls for service, but for the actual quality of care and service the residents are gaining. So some, some, some more of the, some more of the goals, the client receives immediate community-based assessment at first contact with police and receive the care they need on scene. The Mobile Crisis Respond Team ensures that the person is brought to the hospital by police under the Mental Health Act, and that they have been assessed and has been determined that no other less intrusive options are available. Now, when we talk about intrusive, that is the goal of the program, is to remove that intrusivity, because apprehending somebody under the Mental Health Act leads to a whole host of other problems, right? We are essentially taking away that person's liberty for a health-related program. That is a huge responsibility that is being put, huge responsibility and huge liability that is being put on the police. It also creates a huge amount of other problems, not to mention increasing the stigma behind mental health, because it makes people afraid. It makes people afraid of the police, it makes people afraid of the system. So people then tend to shy away from the system as a whole and not get the appropriate help they need in the beginning. So once they arrive at the hospital, they receive timely, appropriate and safe services. And we are going to get into a little bit of the statistics behind, since the inception of the program, we're going to talk directly about some of the wait times and how they've decreased, and I'm sure council will absolutely appreciate that with the current crisis going on in our health system, in our hospital, and the health, and the, the current wait times, how important it is that any investment we can make in reducing that for the overall population, but especially your police and the people we've apprehended, is incredibly important. So there's a tremendous impact on our police resources. Probably the most, probably the biggest one is the efficiency. So I can, for council, if they would like, I can actually quantify in a dollar value how much, how much county council is being saved in OPP dollar amounts, and what that actually equates to putting back out on the road. So the actual dollar amount is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So you are actually, when you invest in this program, even though I give up two officers to the program, the net gain of the program is like council investing in three officers at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, because we show an efficiency and a savings by putting a whole officer back out on the road for every single Mental Health Act call we have. Now, I realize I said that kind of quickly, and obviously, I could quantify it a little bit better, but in my, obviously, in my head, it makes, it makes some complete, it makes complete sense. But for the program to function, for those of you that don't, are still trying to wrap your heads around as I'm speeding through it at the moment, is that along with the clinician that we have as a partner from the hospital, we also dedicate a police officer. So that police officer, we take directly from the front line and dedicate them to the program, so they are not answering the nine-one-one calls for service, the domestics, the sexual assaults, the break-in enters, they are only doing mental health calls for service with the M-CERT. I have two of those officers working twelve-hour shifts, seven days a week. So removing those two away from the, removing those two away from the road would be like taking, would be like taking away two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the policing budget. So my number that I get at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but the efficiency that they cause actually returns one full officer back to the road at another hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So that is like a net savings of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it's, it's tremendous. So we are very, very proud of the program, and again, we see further efficiencies because we're seeing less hospital emergency room time. That's not only a decrease in the number of apprehensions, but that's also relationships that we have forged through the mental health crisis team and addiction team at the hospital, where our number the last three months, our wait time number at the hospital over the last three months, pardon me, has been around thirty-seven minutes when I ran it. So if you think of in and out for our officers at the emergency room at the Cornwall Community Hospital, thirty-seven minutes, that, that's, that's unheard of. You can't visit the pharmacist that fast right now. So the quality of the police interventions that we are seeing as well, so when our officers do have to intervene, we are seeing much higher quality, not only through training, but through their patients, and because they know they're not going to be stuck at the hospital for three, four hours at a time. I've already spoke about the cost effectiveness and an increase in officer presence in the community and available to respond to calls, which is probably the most important, probably the most important thing. I'll turn it over to Angel, who is going to provide, provide you some data exactly on, from the hospital's perspective on the efficiency of the program.
So I thought I'd just highlight some of the good work that these folks are doing through the M-CERT program. So as you can see here, I've sort of have the individual serves versus the number of visits. So although the number of individuals served might not seem very high, the number of visits is usually more than one encounter per person. So that's to say that they may have an initial call from the dispatch, but what we have seen is that often it takes more than just one visit to address the issue. Sometimes it takes two, three visits, sometimes it takes, you know, following up with the person over two weeks, because we know that problems won't just go away after one encounter, one hour spent with a mental health counselor and a police officer. So that's why our number of visits are much higher. because, you know, that one point in care may take more than just that one visit. So, you could see that we've had upward trends since 2020. And this last 2022, 23, this, this is our first quarter, really, of data. And, and so we, we are anticipating that we're going to see probably the same number of people that we did last year, and if not more, this year. Just because we know that the prevalence of addictions and mental health has been quite high and it has increased since COVID. And, you know, so we are anticipating an upward trends. This, I thought, might be interesting to the council, just to see, you know, where are we serving, servicing people more frequently? So, as you can see here, we, we see mostly people in Glengarry, Dundas, Stormont. And we have a breakdown of all the counties. The presenting issues that we're seeing most frequently are specific symptoms of serious mental illness. So, what that means is people, are people who are living with schizophrenia, bipolar disorder. So, it's what we would consider more chronic, serious mental illness. So, that would be who we're encountering the most. And then next to that would be problems with relationships, threat to self and others. So, that's people who are at risk of harming themselves or others. And also substance use is quite high. So, here's just a breakdown of new versus existing clients. So, I think this is, this is good because we are seeing new people, but multiple admissions are less. So, what that means to me is that in that first encounter of care, we are addressing people's issues. So, then we don't see them coming back. We don't see them calling again. So, so that really, you know, shows efficiency within this program. In addition, the team does a lot and complete a lot of referrals. And that's really the purpose of this team, is to, you know, support the individual in the community, help them access services so that we don't see them having to come back to the emergency department or having to be readmitted into our inpatient unit. So, if we connect them to the right services, then often we will see that need go down. So, as you can see here, we do complete a lot of referrals. So, you know, they'll go in and they'll help them make connections to primary care, to addiction services, to withdrawal management services, to anything that might be helpful for them. So, I just wanted to highlight here the inpatient mental health unit so you could see how, you know, it sort of represents a smaller number on, on the referrals that we make, which I think, again, is, is good news. That means to me that we're really diverting a lot of people out of the inpatient mental health unit and really connecting them to community resources and services to help prevent readmission. So, so far, we have received some funding in order to support this program. So, of course, we've been receiving over the past two years, one FTE of, of, of a mental health therapist. And we've been able to support that through the generosity of this council and supporting that program. We've also received one FTE, so one, for one full-time worker of mental health through our Ministry of Health. So, what we've done there is we actually split it between OPP and Cornwall Police Services just because I do have two programs running. I have one program which is called the V-Smart Program, and that's through Cornwall Police Services. And then I have the Emsert Program. So, so we did receive one FTE to support both departments. So, I've been splitting that cost between both. And we've also received an enhancement through, I think it was OPP. And we were able to increase service hours and go to 12 hours, Monday to Sunday. So, that was a great help. This ends, though, at the end of March, I believe. So, we are looking at, we are looking at requesting another enhancement over the next year. And we are going to partner with Cornwall Police Services in order to do that. I don't know if you want to add a bit more about that, Mark?
I'll, I'll, I'll just say that for those of you that aren't familiar or that have heard this. So, when you're looking at the bottom budget line for the one FTE for the OPP enhancement grant, so that is only an enhancement. So, you had to, anybody that applied had to have a currently existing program going. So, when we received that money, that was through, that is through Solgen. It was, it's through a difference, it's, it was through a different stream. It wasn't through MOH. And Cornwall Police and OPP applied separately. The guidance we have received from both the Ministry of Health and Solicitor General moving forward is that any grants or further requests for funding, we will be doing outside of our individual councils, we will be doing it jointly. Because it gives us, it allows us the ability to bargain from a position of strength. It also shows very strong collaboration. So, we will be writing towards saying that the hospital will be leading the program and that we, they will filter downward to the programs. And it will really allow us to better collaborate and combine our resources to really, you know, enhance those services, not just for the counties, but for the city as well. Go ahead, Angel, sorry.
No, it's fine. Thank you. So, this is what we're just talking about. So, 2021 OPP applied for a two-year funding opportunity from the ministry that is to be used to enhance Emsert programs, which we've done and we've successfully implemented. We've received about $120,000 for each of the two years. But as I said, that ends March 2023. So, we were able to, again, increase coverage. And with that as well, we ended up adding a mental health, a mental health worker. So, it's part-time. So, this mental health worker actually works two days a week and they help to support the Emsert program and do some case management and follow-up that's needed. So, we did submit a joint proposal, the Cornwall Police Services and OPP to the Ministry of Health to ensure sustainability of the service. We were looking at requesting permanent funding. So, we did end up sending that this year. We requested an additional one FTE and one MHC to support both programs, which would, you know, support care coordination, referrals, and follow-ups. And we are also looking at aligning those services with a new initiative that the ministry just helped support, which is our Safe Bed Initiative. So, unfortunately, there was only limited base funding announced from the province by the Ontario Health East. And our proposal for base funding was not successful in this last round of reviews. We are told, though, by our Ontario Health East that they recognize the value of this initiative and will continue to push the proposal forward when funding opportunities become available. So, that's really our hope for 2023.
Certainly, for those of you that have sat on council, I, I will go back to the, the last slide. It was a big blow to all of us that our proposal was not. We really did have some high hopes. We really put a lot of time and energy. And we know we had a very, very strong proposal for, for Ontario Health East. We had the data, we had the data to back it up. And it was very, it was very disappointing. I can tell council that my commitment and our commitment as a whole will not be diminished to pressuring the ministry to fund, get that base funding in place. That will continue. I know I only had an opportunity to speak briefly with it, with MPP Quinn, but he certainly was disappointed to hear that as well. I know the Solicitor General will be visiting in January or February, and I will have some sit-down, sit-down time with him. Although not his ministry which provides it. The former Solicitor General, Sylvia Jones, was our, was the Solicitor General previously. So, I'm hoping that I can put some further bug in his ear and hopefully some of those we can, we can be successful in 2023. So, just to provide you some, some further accomplishments. So, our involuntary apprehensions are down more than 42.5%. So, that is a pretty phenomenal number that we've taken it down that, down that low. We're very proud of that. And our diversions probably even more impressive are up 45.3, 45.3%. That's, that's over a three-year period. Very important because, you know, once again, we are, we're saving officer time. We're saving client time, stress. We're saving community time. And we're also saving repeat calls, right? Where are diversions? And the diversions, for me, is probably the more important one because that means we are, our officers and the community are recognizing people that are in need of mental health services and they're being referred before they get to us, right? And we're having the team reach out to them before they get into that crisis stage. As I, as I mentioned, wait times are down an average of almost half an hour and declining steadily. That's year over year. So, we're down to 37 minutes at Cornwall Community Hospital. With the, with Glengarry Memorial and Winchester, we will be working on further helping educate them on the benefits of the program to bring those wait times down as well. And then again, the success and benefits to both police and the community that we serve. So, our belief is that our county residents and families and our friends deserve the best response and care that they are in time of crisis, which speaks to the continued need for a mobile crisis response team in our, in our community. For those of you that have heard me speak before on this, or for those of you that are new, you know that I am tremendously passionate about this program. It's probably, you know, I, I would refer to it as my baby. It's not the first attachment that I have come from, that I've either started the program from the ground or helped expand the program. We are always looking for new and innovative ways to make the program and our officers better because we see the incredible value it has to the residents that we serve. I know many of you on council who are newer might, might be looking at me and might be saying, "Well, Mark, why would we fund a program that the Ministry of Health should clearly be funding?" And I would, and I would simply say to you, because it's the right thing to do. You've supported that program for the past three years. We've shown the incredible results, not just to county council, but to the community. We've received nothing but praise about it. Our officers love it. It is an absolute benefit to the community as a whole. And I do not, I no longer see this as a policing priority. I see it as a community priority. Does it benefit the police? Absolutely it does. But our benefit is to the residents of SDNGs. And that's the most important thing that we need to, that we need to focus on. So, where do we go for here? So, certainly, we, we want to continue to acknowledge the incredible generosity that the United Counties of SDNG have provided us. You know, we, we've obviously shown you some data that we have to support the program. If you'd like more or like to hear more, we can provide, absolutely provide that. We want council to know that we take seriously our promise. And as I've said, we continue to take seriously our promise that we are using every means disposable to us to lobby the government, lobby the Government of Ontario to fund this program with that stable base funding. And today's ask is, we are not only asking council to approve another $120,000 in the budget for this moving year, but moving forward, we would like council to make it a permanent budget line. So, we do not have to, so we can provide council with results on a yearly basis, but we do not have to have the same pitch for funding year over year. One of the challenges that we have been experiencing is that when this program first began and we started it with the hospital, the hospital was able to approach its various associations and unions on a secondment temporary basis. The hospital's associations and unions have now started to push back and say, "Okay, this looks like it's more permanent." When are you going to say that this is permanent? Because we would like to assign those positions permanently, on a permanent basis, so the hospital can backfill them, or they can fill, they can create new positions. And I'm sure that council can understand that from the hospital's perspective and any person that has ever hired anybody. You know, it's nice to have those temporary positions in place. But once they do become a permanent fixture, we do want to make them permanent so that we can hire new staff to backfill into those positions. Not only, you know, provide stability from a workplace perspective, but it provides stability for the worker. And I know that our, speaking solely from OPP, the two, the nurse that we have, she would love to hear nothing more than Merry Christmas. Guess what? No more secondments. This is permanent. Because she is an absolute asset to our detachment and to the communities. And we would really like council to consider that as a permanent resolution, as a permanent budget line. Are there any questions or comments at this time from anybody?
Well, Mr. Hemrick, thank you very much for that presentation. Ms. Quinell, thank you as well for that presentation. And I know in the past, there has been support from the council of SDNG. We have a new council in front of us. And we will have an opportunity. But I think your presentation really sums up the benefit of the program that I'm sure many of us have been proud to participate and partner with you and your group in the past. I'll open it up to Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your presentation. This has been a game changer for us in, in SDNG. And I fully support us making it a permanent position. My question is, what happens if we don't get finance, we don't get funding from the Solicitor General or the Ministry of Municipal Affairs?
Well, that will certainly be, those will certainly be some very difficult discussions, Mr. Mayor. I, I am always the forever optimist. For those of you that don't know me, I, I find a way. And I, I would tell you that if we didn't see the stable base funding and it were something that council were not willing to further fund or make a permanent budget line, I would find alternate funding sources in, in some way. I, I truly believe that the support we now have through the community, that working with the hospital, we, we would find another, we would find another way to do it. It might, it might, quite frankly, it might be an oddball way and one the government or OPP, you know, might not see as their preferred model. But we would find, we would find an alternate, we would find an alternate funding source.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will echo Counselor McDonald's comments. This program has absolutely proven its value to the community and obviously the OPP as well. I, I wonder, to, to Counselor McDonald's point, you know, the, the, the fact that this program really must be funded through the Ministry of Health in some sort of fashion. I'm wondering if we can, Mr. Warden, play a role in perhaps lobbying the government? We have opportunities to do that when we go to the Good Roads Conference and Roma AMO. Maybe that, maybe we can be helpful in that fashion. Because I really think we need to press the government on this. I'm certainly willing to support the program until it gets funded by the government. But I don't think that, that, that long-term funding through the counties is, is really the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Landry and then Counselor McGillis.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the presentation, Commander Hemrick. And, Angel, I didn't get your last name, but I don't think we're here. I can speak probably on behalf of most of us. We're not here as far as the value of the program. I think that part is, is a given, the benefit that it gives our, our resident is, we can't put money aspect on it. But as this was passed two years ago by council, the intention was similar to a pilot project. The intent was to see about partnering with different, whether it be the, the province for, to start with, but also the hospital and everybody on board. So, the fact that the ask keeps coming back, I believe that we will always, or myself, speaking for myself, will always fund it. I can't see where we can deny that. But with comments made by Counselor Williams, is the joining counties, like PNR or Lead, are they having the similar programs in place? Or do you know where they stand as far as? Because it's something maybe just, what I'm getting at is the, maybe through the Wardens Caucus might be another aspect that we can push if this is the bigger issue. And I believe it is, but maybe you can answer that, Commander Hemrick.
I could, yes. So, I can speak directly to Prescott, Prescott and Russell. So, Prescott and Russell receives the, their, their United Counties and they split, they split two detachments. So, the Hawksbury Detachment and the Russell County Detachment. They have the same level of funding, that same level of base funding, which we spoke of in an earlier slide. So, they have one FTE that they split between two detachments. So, similar to the way we split one FTE between two police services, it is the exact, is the, it is the exact same. Leeds County- Leeds County and Grenville, same. They are funded out of the Brockville General Hospital. It is one FTE for both of them. The only difference for uh, Leeds and Grenville is they did receive uh, the MCRT enhancement grant. Now, I, I did discuss and I, I realize that there are some newer members to council at the moment. And uh, I, I realize that our CAO, this will be his last meeting and outgoing, and that the police are, that a new contract, uh, a one-year contract. For those of you that were here for the CAO's presentation with regards to the OPP contract, I'd also sort of maybe plant this seed in your head. But had the contract not been needed to be renewed for another year, during the contract negotiations that I was going to be having with Mr., with the CAO and with the Police Services Board on setting some priorities, there is the option for, there are the option for policing enhancements within that contract. And I was going to float the idea of rather than an enhancement, that that enhance, I was going to be seeking an enhancement, but rather than seeking an enhancement, look at council saying, all right, we fund this pro, we fund this program instead of your enhancement. Now, obviously, that, that can't go with an OPP contract that you sign, um, you sign with the Ministry of the Solicitor General, but it is certainly something that um, that council might want to consider that could be an option for discussion with uh, with the CAOs. Because in my mind, from strictly a policing perspective, funding this program enhances our ability, or enhances our ability to provide policing services to the counties.
Thank you, Counselor Landry. Uh, Counselor McGillis.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to say as a past uh, member of the Police Services Board, that I've seen right from first, firsthand that um, how this program has really improved. And I have to agree with uh, Counselor Landry stating that uh, I don't think it's an issue of the program being so successful. And thank you for, you know, giving this a start as you did earlier. Every time that you approached, uh, council major, or the Police Services Board made your report, I seen improvements every time and uh, and how this helps the community at large. So I will certainly support this as well permanently, as Counselor McDonald said. And Counselor Williams, I think this is a great uh, a great program. We have to continue funding this. It's unfortunate that the province doesn't see the, the essential and the need that we need to continue this, but I was going to ask at the same time before Counselor Williams mentioned, what can we do at this end to make it, you know, that we can actually advocate further and lobby the province to ensure, and our MPP, Nolan Quinn, that this uh, has to be pushed a lot harder and a lot further. So we're with you on this and uh, I'd be happy to be on, on board with that.
Thank you, Counselor McGillis. I'm going to move this to Counselor Dencham and then I think I'll uh, I'll have the final word. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your uh, presentation, Commander. Um, so clearly the efficiencies speak for themselves and I think it fundamentally funds itself and I think we need to continue to have a program like this. It's, it's extremely successful and uh, my wife is a nurse and she's also commented on uh, just how much good this is for the community. I guess my question is, with the funding, if you're getting the funding in place, would the program be right-sized? Are we leaving calls? Are we missing calls because it needs to be bigger? Or where is this heading? Is this, is this going to be right-sized at the moment or?
Uh, I would certainly tell you that I think from, from my perspective, where we are right now with the enhancement grant at twelve hours a day, seven days a week, we are in an extremely good place. Because what we're seeing right now is we are seeing a um, we're seeing our officers and the, and the nurses or the mental health clinic, or the social worker that we currently have working at the detachment. We see them having the ability to respond to those live calls for service. So those nine-one-one or non-emergency calls for service, or those referrals that we need to, we know we need to go out to in person. What we're also finding though is they're not so busy that they're drowning in paperwork. So there is a bit of downtime uh, for them to do paperwork, because for, I didn't explain this part, but the mental health clinicians, they actually work in the detachment. They are fully security cleared. They have the code to the door. There's only three or four areas that they absolutely do not have access in the building. Um, and so like, we see them, like when I'm working late, you know, I will run in, I will run into them and they will often say, I'm glad, you know, there's no officer working today or there's no calls coming in because we, we've got to get caught up. And part, you know, part of that catch-up is just the regular paperwork that comes, but also those other referrals where they're using their contacts and their, you know, they're, they're doing a whole bunch of other things. So really, I, to answer your question very specifically, we are right where we need to be right now. We're very comfortable with, you know, the results we are seeing, the workload, um.
If, if, I felt like I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Not at all, no, not, never good to end with an um.
So um, thank you, Counselor Dencham, and um, I know I've cut this, shortened this up for comments from members of council, but I, I, I believe I speak for everyone, I hope I do, that uh, I understand your pride in the program, Inspector Hemrick. Uh, I'm proud of it. Um, council members that have spoken are proud of it, and I'm sure everyone's proud of it. Um, you talked about the investment, Counselor Dencham talked about the investment, others talked about the investment. Uh, we invest in our roads. We invest in our social services. We invest in our libraries. Uh, we invest in our communities and this is, in my mind, a community investment that needs to be considered, considered strongly. Uh, we will do that at our budget deliberations, but I, I, I'm sure you can go with confidence that uh, we won't leave you hanging at this time. Uh, but until the budget deliberation is uh, is completed, uh, no promises obviously can be made. Um, but I do urge to Counselor Williams' thoughts, I do urge all of us to take the opportunity to express the need of this program to go forward, not to be uh, solely, not solely, largely supported by the community of SDG. It needs to be, I, I'm surprised that uh, the pleas for support to the province for this program have gone on deaf ears. Um, uh, I look forward to the level of funding maybe received at Leeds-Grenville uh, in this community and I'm sure that will be forthcoming if we continue the fight and the fight for the right things. Thank you, Inspector. Thank you, Ms. Quinell. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you, everybody. And uh, I'm just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. All the best to you and your families and I work, uh, look forward to working with everybody in 2023. Thank you again.
Our next delegation is from the Saint Lawrence River Institute. We have Dr. Jeff Redell and Dr. Brian Hickey. Welcome, gentlemen. It will be on whenever it's red and you'll have to press the button with the voice coming out of the mouth.
There we go. We're up and running. Just looking for the presentation. Okay. Okay. Let me just uh, rare stuff this view. There we go. Just get it so it's full screen. How are we doing? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, uh, Warden, and uh, it's a pleasure to be here for our annual update and request to council. And I'll start by offering, uh, as did the former speakers, uh, our congratulations to the returning members of council and to the new members. And uh, as some new faces around council, so uh, since we're, not everyone might be familiar with the River Institute, I'll just start by saying that the River Institute was incorporated in nineteen ninety-four as a nonprofit organization to carry out research, education and outreach to protect and conserve the Saint Lawrence River. And Counties Council was one of the founding members of the River Institute when it was founded, together with City of Cornwall and Mohawks of Aquasasne. And many diverse uh, business representatives and individuals from across our community. So we're uh, we, as I said earlier, we make an annual presentation and update to council to let you know uh, the progress of the River Institute. How are we doing? Next slide. So we're governed by a volunteer board of directors and this year our, our board chair is Deborah Dagel and you can see perhaps a list of familiar names on council. Uh, over the past couple of years, Kristen Gartner was the representative for SDG Counties Council and we look forward obviously to the uh, a new appointment to that role and we welcome that, that person, whoever it may be. So you see is uh, the, the institute team. Uh, it's uh, and we're very fortunate to have gathered a really great enthusiastic, energetic uh, number of people. We're actually thirty people on staff now. Some, not all full-time, but it's a number of different kind of roles. And uh, um, so we're actually, so thirty people, some seven PhDs that are research scientists, as well as we have biologists, technicians, communication specialists and administrators. And, and as you can see, there's a lot of young faces uh, as part of our team. And uh, and really, the River Institute has for a long time sort of served that role as oftentimes attracting those young people in early parts of their career. And to get that valuable experience, working at an organization, working for something they're passionate about and uh, and then actually what actually happens, we, we see this, we, we know this is going to happen with that experience. They move into senior positions then afterwards into, with government agencies, academia, with uh, consulting firms, corporations. Um, so we're really kind of like a feeder uh, for the community and providing that valuable initial, and I think a very positive work experience uh, for these people in the start of their careers. So we say, and, and just like this slide, attest to the strength of the River Institute through its people and the passion that they bring. And as we heard from the last speaker, you couldn't help but notice the passion that that person brings to the role. And everyone at the institute brings similar passion to the institute and to the belief in the environment and the importance that it plays in our, our local community and in, in terms of our way of life. Uh, part of a theme over the past year, and I'm sure it's not, it's familiar with all of you in different organizations, is the idea is as, as we've got some people now moving in, and Brian and I are sitting here with over fifty years' experience working in this field. So, you know, succession planning is an important part of any organization planning for the future. Um, so one of the roles, for example, that is, is transitioning. People may know Pam Maloney, who's worked with us for many years as our Fund Development Officer. Um, she is gradually stepping away and passing the baton on to Elsie Lewison, Dr. Elsie Lewison, who's a new member of our community and she's joined us this past year. Actually, Elsie's with us today and uh, we're very fortunate to bring that kind of level of expertise to the institute. You know, that funding role is very, very important as, as you, I'm sure can all be aware. As well in our, in terms of our succession process, we brought two new members onto our team in terms of our, our leadership team, that is Matt Wendell and Dr. Lee Magahi. And we've done some restructuring. We actually did a strat plan over the last year. And uh, one of the things was to sort of restructure, was to restructure into our research into two different areas. Research and technical services that Matt Wendell heads up and research and community engagement in which uh, Dr. Magahi uh, heads up. And as you'll hear later, I mean, this area particularly, we wanted to, to really formally recognize that this is an area that the River Institute actually has a really great reputation in the Great Lakes Basin, is that connecting research with community needs, listening to the community, communicating to the community, and then hearing back about the sorts of research that, in, in science gaps that they would like to hear back on. One of our big programs that continuing, just as an example of how we work with communities, is the uh, fish identification nearshore study. This is a long-term partnership actually with a, a, a wide group of partners. There's sort of the locals are shown here, but in particularly the Mohawks of Aquasasne, they brought forward the idea, they wanted to know more about the, the fish community and the impact of how habitat changes and other things like climate change is having on that fish community. So this is a program, we, we, we help bring, you know, a better understanding of that fish community. We, we're bringing in new methods uh, to develop uh, new ways of getting better information as well as, you know, creating these collaborations. One of the important aspects is to understand the interaction between those fish health and fish communities and habitat. And for example, one of the areas that we're working on is, is shown in the lower picture there, is that with, with um, low water levels being a really dominant theme, especially above the dam, there's concerns around how those low, low water levels are affecting the fish community. So we're really taking on research in those areas from, um, in, in the Saint Lawrence that are really being affected by those low water levels and trying to get good scientific information that can be, help inform the decision-makers in terms of those things like water level policy. Another really interesting project this year was a partnership with a group called the Great River Network. It's a broad environmental hub, working on environmental and sort of pull together uh, different groups that are interested and, and concerned about issues, one of which is shoreline erosion, in particular, the impact that commercial shipping in the large wake that it makes on our shorelines in this, in this area. And uh, so we've actually created this, this, we were able to attract funding from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans that undertake these types of studies. You can see, so one of the uh, devices that we're using to measure the impacts of the, the size of the waves uh, on, in the, being deployed in the river. And uh, working with the University of Ottawa, we're able to sort of bring the idea of the science bringing it to bear, to impact policy. That kind of got fast-forwarded this year. Actually, I was uh, I was asked to be a standing, a witness for a standing committee for the House of Commons on shoreline erosion, commercial uh, shipping and impacts. I was actually in touch with the MP's office when he, when that happened, so he was able to give me some great uh, support and advice uh, in providing sort of the, the feedback and the uh, sort of the, the impacts locally of this, the shoreline uh, from commercial shipping. So that was a very interesting experience this past year. So at this point, I'll pass it on to Dr. Brian Hickey, who talked about the education programs.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Jeff. Um, so yes, I'm going to talk about um, our, our education and outreach programs, uh, something I'm really passionate about. We're known in the scientific community for the science we do, but I think we're known locally mostly for the education and outreach um, we do. And um, these slides put together by my colleague Stephanie Hildebrandt uh, do so much more than what I can do in, in words in a few minutes. So please look at the slides, not me. Uh, the slides are much more beautiful and they really capture um, what we do. Um, and so um, my role is to try to inspire future generations of scientists and leaders in their fields and um, it's something we, um, we really do um, well. The core of our projects, the core of our outreach and education activities are our school programs. And um, this year there was a huge demand after uh, two years of semi-lockdown. Students and teachers were really anxious to either get out to visit our labs, the River Institute, or have me visit them, or my colleagues visit them um, in schools. We delivered over a hundred and sixteen workshops to approximately three thousand students this year. A, a big um, upsurge. Those are good numbers in any years, uh, but particularly spectacular um, after just coming out of lockdown. The um, in addition, we run some special events like a children's water festival and that. Um, we moved to online during the lockdown period. Um, we now brought it back to a face-to-face event, but we've also maintained the online um, water festival in parallel and that's allowed us to reach a huge number of people. You can see the numbers on the slides here, more than a thousand students in more than forty-five schools participating in water festival alone. And, and part of that projects involves uh, getting high school students to help deliver educational activities. So the water festival targets grade fours, but we give high school students opportunities to develop their professional and teaching skills by putting together videos to be part of our online festival. And um, we also invite them to be face-to-face participants like these two young ladies from one of our local high schools. Um, the um, Jeff talked briefly about Dr. Lee Magahi, who leads up the Great River Rapport. Uh, this is both an outreach and a science project and it's really hard to do justice to uh, Lee's project in um, just a couple of minutes. But what's unique about it is usually when scientists do science, they go out and do their science and then they tell the community how they should behave. Uh, what Lee has done is she's gone out and she's received input from community members, laypeople in the community, as well as people in the broader scientific community and, and she's taken. and, and she's taken those, and she's used that input to develop indicators of ecological health. And then she's acquired data from our own resources, but also from many partners around the province to assess the health of those indicators. And the other thing that's unique about it is, the whole project is framed in the Mohawks' traditional Thanksgiving address. The Mohawks, as Jeff mentioned, are important partners of ours, and we're really lucky to have a good working relationship with them. The River Rapport this year received national recognition. It was nominated for a Science Inspiration Award, given out by the Canadian Museum of Nature. And although we didn't win, it was just really an honor to be, to be nominated for that award, along with some other really great projects across the country. And this is the second time in just a few years that we've received national recognition. Just a few years earlier, the education team was, won a national award, award from the National Sciences and Engineering Research Council of Canada, NERC. And so what's really exciting is, not only have we been nominated, and in one case awarded a national award, those awards were for two completely different partner, groups at the River Institute, the education team and the River Report team. So we're not only being recognized locally, but nationally for the work that we, we do. We do, each year, we host, we host a science conference that has both a science component and a community outreach component. We run nature speaker series, talks monthly, and these together have garnered tens of thousands of online views, in addition to the face-to-face attendance. And finally, we're involved in a new river strategy that we're developing with not only community members, but partners across the province. This is really the, the next phase after the, the culmination of the remedial action plan for the St. Lawrence River. The remedial action plan is coming to its end after decades of guiding environmental work on the St. Lawrence River. And without community input and without community fighting for a river strategy, this remedial action plan project, after it wraps up, will just result in government agencies saying, "We're done with the St. Lawrence River, everything's great." And we know we've made great improvements, but we know there's also more work to do. So this river strategy is looking forward, and this river strategy that we're leading is going to ensure that provincial and federal governments don't forget about the St. Lawrence River and just check us off as a project that's been completed. And that's a project that, I think, in the years to come, is going to be very important. So we're requesting continued support from the counties in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year, the, the upcoming calendar year, 2023. We're, we'd like to end by thanking you for your support, as Jeff said, going back to the founding of the Institute, and hope to continue to work with councillors and the SDNG community going forward. And so thank you for your attention and allowing us to tell you about what we're really excited about at the River Institute.
Thank you very much for your presentation, gentlemen. At this time, questions, comments from members of council? Well, I do have comments. So saying, your presentation is a much-needed presentation. Many of us are, are somewhat unaware, if we're not fishers or campers, or anglers or campers. We don't get out to the St. Lawrence as often as, as many others do. And I, I do know it's an, it's an important, vital, vital river in our community and in the country. And the efforts by the St. Lawrence River Institute to ensure the viability and the life of that continues, those efforts are important. But also important is the, understanding your efforts and understanding the, the successes of your efforts. That is also vitally important, and I appreciate the presentation. I hope all of council has time to digest the information, and I look forward to the reports coming back in the future from the new member on the, from this table that'll be sitting with you. Saying that, thank you very much for the presentation, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, and happy holidays to you as well.
We'll move into action requests. Madam Clerk, Corporate Services?
Thank you. The first motion's moved by Councillor Dencham, seconded by Councillor Bergeron, and reads that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry approved that Article thirteen point seven of the county's Personnel Policy Manual be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. The county's non-union salary grid will be adjusted annually based on a three-year rolling average of the Consumer Price Index for Ontario. The adjustment will be effective January first each year, and based on the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index for Ontario for the three years immediately preceding the year of the increase. In the event of a negative average, the non-union salary grid will remain unchanged for the ensuing year.
Thank you very much. Mr. CAO, you were going to speak to that?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everybody. This is something that we've been, primarily Rebecca and I have been chatting, as well as the other directors, for quite some time. There's a longstanding policy in our Personnel Policy Manual, predates me. I don't know how long it's been there, but it, essentially what it says is that the CPI for the preceding year is awarded to non-union staff in the, in the, in the, in the year following. As I note in the report, this doesn't apply to the, our staff that are unionized. They're covered under the collective agreement for, for, for those staff, and that, that's an agreement that's expiring at the end of April and have to be renegotiated in 2023. So this just applies to the non-union staff. So we, we've talked a lot about it. We've talked to the local CAOs. We've looked at different ways to do it. And, and this is coming forward to you at this time because we're, as you know, we're just getting into the budget in January, February. So we'll need some direction from council in terms of what you'd like to do, so we have a firm number. There, there's four, there's four options there. And, and just let me back up. The reason this is coming forward now is, obviously, as I mentioned, because of the budget. But we all know where inflation's been running this past year. I think today, the number's coming out for the, for the preceding months. It'll be interesting to see, but it's been running between six and a half and seven percent consistently all year. So given the fact that council, I believe in October, approved the new salary grid for non-union staff, which is coming into place January first, 2023, we thought it was a good time to, to have a chat about this and to bring some, some options forward to council to mall over. There's four options there. The, the first option you'll see is the current method. Rebecca provided the table there. You see on the bottom of page thirty-three. So we've gone back to 2009. So we've got all those numbers from 2009 right up till 2022, the current year. So, and, and you know, looking at twenty, for, for this year, as I said, we don't know whether it's going to be six or six and a half, and or seven. So we didn't think that that was quite palatable, given the recent upgrade to the grid. So we've, we've looked at these other options. The fixed rate, you know, we just pulled two percent out of there. Again, we don't, we don't feel that that's a very, a, a good option, because it doesn't actually capture the nuances that you're going to see through, through inflationary increases. So there's, there's two options that we think are, are, are most viable. There's the, the three-year rolling average, which is the recommended option. And essentially, that's used by groups such as Omer. So it, it, it always rolls the preceding three years. So in the, in year four, you get that, and it's always currently updated. The beauty of that one, it catches all of the inflationary increases, whether they're positive or negative. So you get a true, a true value, which will protect you, if you will, at, at, when you're looking at your compensation review and your salary, your salary grids, because we had one done this year. And, you know, our, the ML Consulting, the lady that did our, she said we had done a very good job of keeping our salary grid current, which, as you know, in this environment, in competitive environment for staff, is, is very important. So that's the one we're recommending. The other option that's, is, is used, I know, I know North Dundas used it, is, is, is you, you have a fixed amount. So if you're, for instance, between one and three, you get the actual. If it's below one, you get one. If it's above three, you get three. So you're always in that, in the ballpark. There's nothing wrong with that one as well. Again, it, it provides inflationary increases, but it, it doesn't stray outside a max or a min. So, Mr. Warden, here's the information presented. We're, we're recommending, as I said, the, the option that, the smoothing option or the rolling option. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CAO, and I will open the questions, comments. Councillor Gendel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, comment for consideration by council. So moving from this current policy to the three-year rolling average will cost the counties the same amount of money in the long term. It's just shifting the burden of this high CPI over the budget for the next two years. What my concern is, is it'll have a negative impact for our lower sour, lower salary employees. It'll affect our purchasing power in the short term. So does that make sense? Another reason why I raise this is, at the lower-tier level, we're having a, a problem with wages aren't keeping up with the private sector. So will this put us a little bit behind the eight ball in the short term?
Thank you, Councillor Gendel. Mr. CAO?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Those are, those are very valid points, and I, I think we've, we've talked through them here. Just having gone through the, the compensation review, we were aware, and this, certainly the consultant noted, that you mentioned the, the lower pay bands. In, in our instance, the, the lower pay bands were higher than average for both the private and the public sector. Where we kind of fell short was when we got up into the, the management. We don't have a lot of layers of management here. We have myself, the directors, and then some below. Those were where some of the adjustments were mostly. So I, I think that in the context of the, the lower pay bands, they're well compensated at this point. So, point taken, though. You're right, it's going to, and then the other point around the picking it up in the, in the third year, you know, certainly that's, that's valid as well. We do, I know everybody talks ourselves and, and the local municipalities in terms of, you know, where everybody's at. And as you know, it's a really competitive market. I mean, we're taking from you, you're taking from us, and, and so on and so forth. So hopefully, with more harmonization along the wage rates, that'll, that'll minimize that. But it's not going to get around the, the macro-level pressures of regionally and provincially, nationally and internationally. What, what's driving all this is, is lack of, you know, there's more, obviously, there's more demand than supply, which is, was hurting it. So again, it's up to council in terms of what, you can maintain the status quo or move in a different direction. But those, those are good points. I think council should consider them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Is there any other, yes. Councillor Broad?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, question to the CAO. Potentially, going forward, it may not actually be a cost savings, as you're giving percentages on percentages over the three-year period. So it could actually be an increase to the employee. Secondly, on that, does it also affect pensionable earnings in a way that their rate could be higher or lower average typically if they're, if they're using a three-year, five-year, whatever the pension calculations are?
Thank you, Councillor Broad. I'm going to look to our treasurer on the pensionable earnings question. It's a good one. Sorry to put you on their spot, Rebecca. I think the answer's yes, but I'm not...
Okay. So the pensionable earnings question, if the earnings are in the current year, then those wage increases would be considered in the pensionable earnings. If we go for the six point seven five, then that increase is in that year. If we go lower, it only captures the amount that we're, that we're increasing it by. So you are correct.
Follow-up, Councillor Broad?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Will this, this number, the three point six five, have an impact on future union negotiations?
Through you, Mr. Warden. That's, you know, certainly, everybody does their homework before getting into collective bargaining. We'll do our homework and, and as well, QP well, locally and nationally. So these are all public figures. So, you know, obviously, it's, it's part of a bigger picture that people need to be aware of. At, the six point seven five would play into it as well. So that, that's something that's going to have to be discussed amongst this group in terms of what, what approach you want to take to collective bargaining, which, as I said, the, the CA expires in April. So bargaining, we've had a four-year agreement, so I would, I would suspect bargaining will happen shortly thereafter. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. I do thank staff for looking at this, because six point seven five percent would be fairly untenable, I believe, to the community, given the environment. So thank you for looking into the three-year rolling average. I'm probably a proponent of the minimum one percent, maximum three percent, only because it gives a, a clear outline of where you can go. And I would also caution local, at your local representations to, maybe if we can all do the same thing, because that, that would be helpful, the consistency at the county level, as well as the lower tiers. So I'd be in favor of option four, but option two is a nice, kind of one B option as well. And I appreciate not looking just to do the CPI and bring that forward to us.
Thank you, Councillor McDonald. Councillor McDonald, followed by Councillor Gendel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I agree with Councillor McDonald, that, you know, at the township of North Glengarry, we're aware of having to deal with the unions. So we, we came in at two percent across the board. So I think I, I prefer the one to three. I think that's sufficient enough. And if we, you know, we, you know, we just can't keep hampering ourselves in the future for, for wages. And I think that, you know, especially here at the counties, they, I think the pay is quite well, and we're competitive, and we, we have great staff. So I, I don't know that we need to, we need to go much higher than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking around, Councillor Gendel. And then is there someone else after Councillor Gendel? Councillor Gendel?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Based on the CAO's comments with respect to the, the pay review that happened in 2020, and the fact that the, our lowered salary employees are above average, my, my concern is, it's, I, I no longer have that concern based on his comments. So I'm fine with the proposal presented by staff.
We have some opinions out there, council members. Some are saying one to three. I think it's option B. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
What is the option four?
Option four is min-max. Thank you. We have some contending option four is the, the path to follow, and there is some, I believe, thought on the recommendation. There's lots of options. There's four of them. So let's just do a quick straw poll, and then we may see if we have to modify or continue. And I'll start at McDonald. Thank you. Okay, we, yes, ma'am.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We do have a motion on the table that does go ahead and approve, I believe it's option two, but we can amend that motion?
Please do.
Okay. If I have a mover and seconder to amend the motion to, we'll just come up with some rewording here. Just a moment, and we'll come up... So through you, Mr. Warden, is there a mover and seconder to amend the main motion, to change it to option four?
Do I have a mover? Councillor Broad, a seconder, Councillor Lang?
And then we have to vote on the amendment first. So all in favor for the amendment? Okay. Okay. And then I can read the main motion as amended. It is originally moved by Counselor Dencham, seconded by Counselor Bergeron, reads that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry approved that Article 13.7 of the county's personnel policy manual be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. The county's non-union salary grid will be adjusted annually based on a minimum of 1% to a maximum of 3% per year, based on the CPI for Ontario. In the event of a negative average, the non-union salary grid will remain unchanged for the ensuing year.
We heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. The next actual request is the South Nation River Conservation Board of Directors, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor St. Pierre, and reads, whereas the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry is apportioned three members of the 12-member South Nation River Conservation Authority Board of Directors in accordance with Order in Council 31696. And whereas the majority of the township of North Dundas is within the South Nation River Conservation Authority jurisdiction, and as per past practice, has appointed one of the three members. And whereas the Conservation Authorities Act now requires a participating municipality of a conservation authority to ensure that at least 70% of its appointees are selected from among the members of municipal council. And whereas the Conservation Authorities Act allows a participating municipality to apply to the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry to appoint a public member representative. And whereas Bill Smurl of the Township of North Dundas has served on the South Nation River Conservation Authority Board of Directors for 12 years, with the majority of his terms spent on the executive. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry authorizes the C A O to request a minister's exception under subsection 14.1.2 of the Conservation Authorities Act for Mr. Bill Smurl of the Township of North Dundas to serve on the South Nation River Conservation Authority Board of Directors as a representative of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry for a four-year term, 2023-2026.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Questions, comments from members of council? Counselor Dencham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, many of you may know that I sit as the vice chair of South Nation right now. Bill Smurl is, is an extremely valuable member of the board, and he has a lot of knowledge and experience, and he has a fantastic relationship with staff, so much so that actually when we had to rehire our, or had to hire for a general manager, we actually asked him to sit on with us with the executive in order to, to hire. He brings a lot of experience. And given the fact that, you know, we're dealing with Bill 23 right now, which has significant implications for the Conservation Authority, and I just think it would be very valuable for us to continue to have him available and his knowledge and his experience. So I would ask that we support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dencham. Any other comments from members of council? We've all heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried, thank you. Financial Services, Ms. Russell, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor McGillis, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the proposal from Chubb Insurance Company of Canada for the January 1st, 2023 renewal of the occupational accident insurance policy at a premium of $7,343 plus tax, and the excess workers' compensation identity policy at a premium of $45,293 plus tax, and that the Director of Financial Services Treasurer be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contracts.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
So the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry has been a Schedule II WSIB employer since the year 2000. That's when we converted from a Schedule I employer. A Schedule I employer, what that means is the WSIB premiums are paid based on earnings that we pay our staff members, which for us in next year would be about $265,000. So when we became a Schedule II employer, we evaluated our conditions and our staffing. And being that we don't have high-risk liability areas such as emergency medical services, EMS, fire, we were mostly administrative and roads construction, we were able to retain and become a Schedule II employer, which means that we pay for WSIB claims as they occur. So we're self-insured in this, that respect. There is a huge cost savings and has been for, since we've, we've completed this, this plan. Our package is not normally more than $50,000 a year. There's a slight increase due to the increase in wages and positions over the last year, but it's still a highly beneficial package to obtain, and the cost savings are recognized every year whenever we complete our budgets. The deductible for any major claim is $500,000, which in the past, speaking with councils, would be funded through our working reserve should an event like that occur. And we have very, very minimal claims that happen throughout a year. So it's not, it's still something that I would recommend is just going with the liability insurance for this package.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Questions, comments? Yes, Counselor McDonald?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Just to curiosity, if you're allowed to share the information, you said it's $263,000 for, if we went the other way, and it's $52,000 this way. Obviously, claims do not go to $210,000. Is there a range that the claims typically fall within any given year, the actual savings? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I should have asked that on Friday.
You're speaking of the claims that would come through the county? I'm only going based on memory, so I would have to pull out that information individually. I would not see any costs higher than $10,000 a year, and oftentimes, much less.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And Counselor, if you do need those numbers, and they are good numbers to have, I'd rather Ms. Russell get the firm numbers than, than I believe. Thank you. Yes, go right ahead.
Subsequently, I don't need those firm numbers. At, at $10,000, even if she's off by 10 times, we're still saving considerable amounts. So I'm, I'm happy with the answer as it's received.
Spoke like a true numbers man. Further questions, comments? I, I do have a comment, and I, I just want to express that we're fortunate that we're able to be a class, is it class two, is that the proper term?
Schedule two.
Schedule two, thank you for correcting me. We're fortunate to be Schedule two, and that goes out to the, the belief in safety with our, all of our staff, not just the roads department, but all of the staff, and being mindful of, being mindful of the corporation. And it's appreciated that we're able to be a Schedule two and see those savings. So thank you very much to everyone for that. If there's nothing further, we've all heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, that's carried. I'm used to turning it off. So at this point, I suggest we take a five-minute break to stretch our legs, and we'll reconvene
Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to transportation in the four-year resurfacing plan.
It's moved by Council Bergeron, seconded by Councilor Denchum, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry endorsed the attached four-year resurfacing plan as prepared by C D Waters Engineering Limited.
Thank you, Mr. Janz.
Good morning. Thank you. So what we have here is the four-year resurfacing plan, new one. We completed the last plan in 2022. And so what this plan looks at is the asphalt resurfacing on roads. It doesn't deal with any defects. It's strictly resurfacing the asphalt. So we wouldn't be looking at anything with like flood plains, inadequate width, et cetera. Those would be special projects. This is just where we can breathe new life into the roads and keep them in good condition. So we've been following these plans, both with council and staff since 2020-10. The last study was completed in 2018 and expired in 2022. And it's a very valuable tool for both council and staff to lay out the plan. So we're all aware of the upcoming work and it helps us to sort of normalize the work year over year and keep things steady. On the staff side, we use this to prepare for the upcoming year with geotechnical investigations, pipe replacements, so that we don't have to break nice asphalt if we have to replace a pipe, et cetera. In the absence of having an adopted plan, we have had to start some geotechnical investigations in preparation for next year. So I'm hoping that this goes smoothly because we have some boreholes going down this week. So that we can ensure that what we're doing is appropriate for what's out there already. So we have, we retained C D Waters Engineering Limited in 2022 to prepare the plan. And the first draft was brought here in August. And so the previous council opted to defer the endorsement to the current council. And in the time since August, we, the county staff noticed a few minor items that we could work on to improve the plan and find efficiencies. So when we, when we get into the road network, what we have is approximately 1,000 centerline kilometers of road. And every year that network ages by 1,000 kilometer years, let's say. And the approximate lifespan of the asphalt, once it's placed, is about 20 years. And so if we're doing 50 kilometers of road per year, we're putting approximately 1,000 kilometer years of life back into the network. And then the asphalt begins to deteriorate. And this is an approximate curve of what we see in terms of the quality of the asphalt over time. We expect to get about 20 years out of it. And there isn't a bit of an initial drop off. The road starts to experience some of the effects of the weathering and the usage and thermal cycles. And we do get some cracking. And so we like to do some timely maintenance in the beginning to address those cracks, keep the water out while keeping the road flexible. And then it does drop off a little bit more near the end of life.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Thanks. I'll just jump in here because we, you know, not, it's not to scale. We have County Road 22, and that's intended to illustrate dire road. Because it's a discussion, an important discussion we're going to have at budget time with council. But the point being is I've been here at the counties for 14 years now. On my first road tour, we were talking about reconstructing County Road 22. And it sat, it has gotten worse. Don't get me wrong, it has gotten worse over those years. But it's marginally gotten worse compared to some roads that were up at the top end of that curve as they start that initial deterioration. So what, and what Mike is talking about is trying to put those timely investments in so we don't get into the County Road 22 situations. They're somewhat inevitable with a road system like this and the challenges with budgets. But at the end of the day, it just really does illustrate to me perfectly how a road can sit in a very, very poor state and marginally deteriorate. But it, but by doing that and by, you know, to the previous council's credits, you know, they have, it wasn't that they ignored that road, but rather they made sure that the money they were investing was investing in the right part of that curve to keep the rest of that road system in great shape, which we do have a great road system. I, you know, I hope, I hope that council can see that and keep that in the right, in their minds.
Okay, so if I could speak quickly about some of the maintenance that we do and when to do it. This is another deterioration curve, not quite the same shape as the last one. But it sort of speaks to where that road is on this curve and what you might consider doing to it. And so we do stay on top of the preventative maintenance. As the road starts to drop off, we might do a micro-surfacing. Again, this curve doesn't accurately reflect our climate here. But around eight years into the age of the asphalt, we'll do a micro-surfacing, which bumps the quality up a little bit. It'll smooth out some of the issues, the cracks that have formed underneath that you might feel as you're driving. They are smoothed over with a fresh new surface. And it pushes the deterioration of the road further into the future. So you might get to about the 15-year mark before you start to really drop off again. And so this is how you can see, we can get the 20 years out with, with some maintenance. We're still up in the, in the poorer as opposed to the very poor. And we can consider a major resurfacing as opposed to a reconstruction. And so after about that 20th year, we'll consider a recycle and resurface event, and we start the whole process over again. So the first draft that we brought to council was this map here. And a couple of things I'd like to point out, it is very small here. So I'll just note that the yellow is proposed to be done in 2023. The blue was 2024, the pink was 2025, and the green was 2026. And if you look very carefully, you'll note that you'll have multiple colors very close together. So the pavement crews would be coming back to the same location, one, two, three years in a row to get the job done. And so we have a few examples of that in these red boxes. So one of staff's suggestions was, let's just shuffle a few things around a little bit. And so the contractor only has to come to that location once, one year, get the job done, move on to an entirely new location, and we're going to save on mobilization and demobilization and schedule efficiencies as well. So this is what we put together with that regrouping. And there were just a few top-ups in those years as well to make sure that we were targeting that 50 kilometer per year quantity of work. And so this, this would be a, a plan that covers all of the roads that are in need. And we feel with a decent level of efficiency. And once you look at the quantities, some conservative cost estimates. We have an estimated 10-year capital cost graph that looks like this. Of course, we will have another four-year plan closer to 20, I believe it will be 2026. And then we will have fresh data to work with. And the yellow line up there represents the sort of 12-year average that we'll try to keep things year after year in 2022. Just to, we'll level out the bumps as we put together our budgets. And keep a steady program that we propose to you guys each year to achieve this. And I'll put this back up here for.
Maybe I'll just, so concluding remarks from our end. You know, we're happy to take some comments, questions from council, obviously. This is, for us, we always see this as a positive in terms of being able to illustrate to council what our goals are, to keep the road and the roads that we have in the kind of overall condition we have. And that's what this plan does. The other part of it too, as Mike was saying, is that, you know, by understanding what we're doing, not only next year, but a couple of years ahead, also gives us that ability to plan, work ahead, start worrying about culverts, underground infrastructure, things like that. And so it's invaluable to us because if we are working on a, it's, it's one thing, we can, we can add a road in at budget time if there's some priorities that council does have. That's, we can accommodate that, and our staff are extremely talented and capable to be able to do those kinds of things. Last year was a great example, where we added in a bunch of roadways that were kind of falling off that curve. And we added them in on top of the four-year plan. And we were able to make sure that those roads were done correctly and all the underground infrastructure was, was good. We had enough sufficient information to do that. But that gets very, very, very challenging if we're talking about picking 50 kilometers a year and doing that at budget time. So if I could reemphasize for us at the staff level, understanding which, you know, kind of where we're going next year and two years ahead is so invaluable to be able to make sure those roads are ready to be worked on.
Thank you, Mr. Dehan and Mr. Janz. Questions, comments from members of council? Councilor Denchum, followed by Councilor Lang.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. So if I caught the numbers correctly on the graph, it suggested in 2023, we needed about $10 million to do the work that we're proposing, but the average is 12 million. So are you, are you looking for this budget year for 12,000 so we can smooth that curve and put some in reserves? I'm not sure the dynamics, maybe it's a newbie question here. But are you looking potentially to go, you know, for the, for the 10 million and just deal with, with what needs to be done this year?
So typically, whenever we do, we have the budgets created under the four-year plan. They're using the, we'll call it the, the unit rates that we have available to us. Every year, as we actually tender out and get more precise with unit rates, those get adjusted up and down. So I, I believe even though this four-year, excuse me, the four-year plan that's in front of council, this graph does illustrate slightly less than 12 million. I think our actual detailed estimates come in very close to 12 million, which is pretty typical. Is that some items are overestimated, some items are underestimated. And, and what we like to present to council is a budget that isn't, that we're not spiking up and down all the time. So absolutely, if there's a year where we're less than, and it makes sense to put some money into a reserve, we would suggest that. But I believe, to be perfectly frank with council, our draft budget that we have with, in finance right now, does, it's approximately 12 million dollars is what will be. And that's just to strictly do the work identified in this map for next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Councilor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. Thank you, Mr. Han, and you guys for this presentation. As a resident, I've always noticed county roads. I think what you, we've done, and I wasn't on this table, but this table has done a good job of keeping our roads up. They're very seldom get complaints. There is a few, and I don't know a lot of the roads other than our own municipality. And that's just a matter of, you know, I haven't been on this table before. Hadn't had to pay attention to them very much, you know, I drive 43. But I don't need to get on all the, to all the other communities, you know? So I read the thing a couple of times, and thank you, Mr. Dehan, for sending the map as well because I wasn't sure what all of those serial numbers stood for. But I'm uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable passing something that's worth about $60 million on my very first meeting. I mean, this is the first time we've sat here and actually had to make a decision on this. And I know there's seven of us that are new. We haven't had a roads tour yet. We, we haven't even kind of got up to speed on how this is normally done. But you're looking for the next four-year commitment on our very first meeting. So it makes me a little uncomfortable. But at the same time, I really appreciate, you need to know what you're going to do next year to get tenders out, to get numbers, to get moving. You've already started with the geotechnical, obviously, and this sort of thing. So I'm trying to, in my mind, think of something that would make me more comfortable. And I'm not sure exactly what it is. Like, if we could have a little more information, come back and say, you know, next month, past one years, rather than the whole four year before we've even had a roads tour and seen what's out there and what needs to be done. And I don't know if I'm the only one that feels like this, but it just makes me uncomfortable. I know there's some members that have been here for a few years and they, you know, it was very nice of them to defer it, to not pass it, you know, a month or two ago. We wouldn't even have had any say in the next four years, really. But that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know if anybody else is feeling the same. I'm curious to see what everybody would do.
Mr. Dehan.
Thanks. And I, you know, Councilor Lang and I have had some good discussions about this. And I completely respect the, you know, how he's feeling and that sentiment. Maybe one thing I can reassure council, and Councilor Lang in particular, is that ultimately, this comes back. Every year, we come back to council with the budget. This is just what our budget is based on, the plan that our budget is based on. And council has the ultimate say whether they like it, don't like it. So this is the overarching document. I, but again, I appreciate that, that sentiment that, you know what, I want to understand the process before I'm willing to commit to saying this is what I think our council needs to accomplish in four years. So I totally respect that. And I don't, I guess I don't want to, I don't want council to feel like you're pigeonholed if you, if you do pass it because there is a say every time at budget, whether it happens or doesn't happen. And, and the philosophy we've taken is if there's other roads that council really has as a priority, it gets done on top of that four-year plan. But again, I appreciate that maybe that's not the philosophy this council wants to, to take. So I don't really have an answer, you know, but, but I do want to reassure you that ultimately, these, each road is identified in the budget with the associated dollar value. And, you know, it's a thumbs up, thumbs down from council whether they want to actually proceed with it based on, you know, the needs, you know, balancing those demands from the taxpayers.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mr. Dehan. It's Councilor McDonald, Councilor Landry, and then Councilor McDonald.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. In reading through this, I thank you for, one, the 33% savings on mobilization costs. And I know that you, you have discussions with our lower-tier managers or directors, general managers as well. So I hope we receive those as well. Something interesting, as I was reading through this, and I'm not suggesting doing what I'm saying, but in looking at road adequacy, it says 73% is that very good and good. And if we decrease that, because we're a levels of service and taxation body, really, 67% very good and good, it said it would save 20%. I find those numbers mind-boggling, and I don't know what 6% looks like on a road. I'm not recommending that. But financially, I know what $2.5 million looks like. Now, the county roads, obviously, I'm an infrastructure guy at heart, so I'm not recommending that. But I'm curious if you have, like, what would a 6% decrease in, you know, very good, good roads look? And I don't think it's worth $2.5 million, but I'm just curious what, like, that statement stuck out to me.
Yeah, that's, sometimes, and I'll just be frank with, with council, when these evaluations are done, it's a visual evaluation. It's not, it's not with lasers, because, and I'm, lasers. But there is that kind of methodology out there, right, that you can use all sorts of fancy cameras. This is done by visual observation. So there is a level of, I'm going to say, there is a level of just human bias that is probably built into some of the ratings that we do have. And that's okay, like, that's, you know, at least if we're consistent with the way we look at it. We look at it, you know, one person looks at it altogether, or a group, a team of people look at it altogether. If we have the consistency looking at it, then you can feel comfortable in the overall picture that we're, we have. You know, if we start, if we start reducing the, the type of adequacy we have in our roadway, may not be noticeable for a long time. But it is, the best analogy I've always thought of with roadways and this type of aging of infrastructure, it's like a, it's like a glacier. It just keeps, you know, it just keeps coming every year. It's just the slow advancement of this glacier. And if you're not keeping up with that advancement of the glacier, which is what this plan represents, is that, you know, it may, it may only be a marginal amount, but that marginal amount that you kind of fall behind just continues to, it's hard to actually get back to where you were before. So I know it's, specifically, what might it mean if someone's driving the roadway? It might be unnoticedable. But ultimately, if, ultimately, if that's a long-term strategy, it will, it will catch up with us eventually, and then all of a sudden, it will be very noticeable.
Thank you, Mr. Dehan. We're going to move on to Councilor Landry.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So thanks, Ben. So the map, a general overview. So a lot of our residents do not make the link between a county road and a township road. So we are getting the, so I'll use my, my backyard as an example. So you're shown 12 and 13 being looked at in 2024, and then nine being looked at the year after. If I was to drive down, which I do, drive down those roads many times, 13 and 12 aren't as bad as nine where you're seeing the depression. It looks like more of an underground issue than, than an actual surface. It looks like if you were just to go and micro-surface it, it would just deteriorate not far after because of what's underneath. So maybe explain the message, if you get your residents saying, hey, you know, like you're redoing 12. What we're micro-surfacing, what we're reconstructing? What's the sort of message that you would relate to your constituents as far as? I know that there's the crack sealing and stuff that you do. So maybe just give us a broad view of what you're.
I've used this analogy many times, and I'll use it again. It's, you know, managing a road network is much like managing your house. And think of the roof of your house. You lose a shingle, or you have maybe a nail exposed. You put some caulking on it to seal it up. That's crack sealing. You know, very simple, straightforward way to keep the water out of the roof. When you get into starting to lose a couple of shingles and you replace, get up there, replace them right away, that's like a micro-surfacing where you're kind of just doing a quick little fix. It's not a permanent fix. You're not generally creating a bunch of new life into that road, road network or into that roof. You're just really kind of patching it, making sure it's good, it's going to hold. A reshingling, I'm going to keep going with this. A reshingling is very much like a resurfacing job where you're actually, you know, you're taking the shingles off, new shingles on. Now you've rejuvenated and put a lot of life into your roadway. If you have let the shingles deteriorate to the point that your roof decking is rotten, that's reconstruction. And it's the same thing, right? It's a reconstruction where you actually have to go down, start fixing up the base and building a new roof deck, and then you can put your shingles on. So it's no different with the roadway. So you let the water in, you let that deteriorate to that point. It's a, it's a bigger and more expensive job at the end of the day. So that's, you know, our efforts in the micro-surfacing and crack sealing is all about trying to prevent it from rotting out underneath it. County Road Nine, there are instances where we have localized areas where we do need to do a little bit more of an enhanced repair to it with soft spots. So we'll actually, for example, if, and I know what you're referring to, Councilor Landry, we will dig out soft spots and replace it with fresh material. But that's not necessarily the whole roadway, which is the difference between, you know, seeing this on the plan here versus what we're doing on County Road 22, which is kind of a complete roof deck, you know, from the trusses up kind of job that we're doing there with a widening and all sorts of things. So that's, that's how I tend to describe it to residents. So, that's, that's how I tend to describe it to residents, is, you know, each one is a little bit of a, a different type of intervention, but the ultimate goal is the same.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, subsequent, so, with that being said, my question basically falls into, as councillor Lang mentioned, the serial number. So to try to make a link to understand which one is micro-surfacing, so you're, the map basically identifies when we're tending to it versus understanding what exactly we're doing, so I don't know if there's another way to identify nine, twelve, thirteen with these serial numbers to try to see what it is that we're doing.
And sorry, I should be clear. These are, this, the map that we, because we recognize that, that, that we had micro-surfacing kind of on an original map council saw, but we felt that it was, it actually got a little bit confusing. So this is just resurfacing. What you see here is just resurfacing. Yeah, micro-surfacing's not shown, and that's something we look, every year, we'll go out and take a, take a look at those roadways, and, you know, we, we have it through the report, a, a good recommendation plan for micro-surfacing, and that's, you know, it's generally following about eight years after we've resurfaced a roadway. So we'll go out, take a look at it, and there are instances where we might look at it and say, you know what? It's still pretty good. We don't need to micro-surface this. We just crack seal it. Let's let it sit for a couple more years, let a few more cracks develop and come back and micro-surface it. So, generally speaking, we tend to evaluate in the springtime and confirm our micro-surfacing areas based on the recommendations in the report, like, the broad recommendations in the report. And that's, that's how we generally, you know, undertake our micro-surfacing program.
Thank you, Mr. Dahan. Councillor McDonald, followed by councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and can't believe councillor Lang has the audacity to question you, Ben, I mean, geez. Kidding. But to councillor Lang's point, I think the four-year plan, and I understand what you're saying, is that you're being asked to approve something that is, is a large dollar value, but in fact, we aren't approving that. This is a, this is basically the non-political assessment of our roads, where we're not all fighting for getting something done, or a road that we think needs to be done. The real, the real decision happens at budget time, and that's when we'll go through each road. We oftentimes, we move roads based on need. We, you know, a member of council will, you know, bring up something that's, that's in their community that is really bad, such as I did with, in the last meeting, about Main Street in Alexandria. And council tends to oftentimes agree with that member of council, because they're from that area. So, I think it's, you're going to see all that work happen at budget, and it's not just, we're not throwing, or Ben's not throwing a whole plan at us that doesn't have some research to it. It's, it's just the beginning of it. The bit, the, the asphalt hits the road when, at budget time, for sure, so just wanted to...
Thank you, councillor McDonald, for that bit of reassurance for councillor Lang. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I, to councillor Lang's point, yeah, I, I think maybe council could benefit from an explanation on exactly when they're going to receive certain types of information based on what is, what they're going to be able to have input in, on. Does it all come at, at budget time, in terms of, you know, crack sealing and, and that kind of thing? Or, or does that, also, County Road Twenty-two is not in the four-year plan. It's never been in the four, or the ten-year plan, and it has to be funded otherwise. And when our, I'm sure they're wondering, when exactly, should they be putting their hand up for their list of roads that are on their mind and that kind of thing? So, because I know that we have a section of County Road Thirty in North Glengarry where the shingles are gone completely. And so, you know, I, you know, we need to discuss that road as well. So, I don't know whether now is the time to do that, or subsequent meeting.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So our plan, I know we have budget tentatively, or scheduled, excuse me, for February thirteenth, fourteenth, yeah. So, but, but the intention, actually, of our department is to come to council in January with a very, you know, the draft overview of the budget, and that would be the, the right time to have those discussions, if there's things in there that councils feel is, feels are missing. With respect to exactly what roads are getting crack sealed, micro-surfaced, generally, we would provide the micro-surfacing at budget or around budget time, but we don't, and it's not, if council wants it, we're happy to, to provide it. Like, I, I guess we're cognizant of information overload as well, and we don't, so, you know, generally, you see a global number, like, micro-surfacing, half a million dollars, you know, planning to micro-surface fifty kilometers of roads, the, you know, and kind of give a, a very broad list of what those roads are. Crack sealing is something we actually go out and assess in the springtime, so after the thaw is done, just to, because, you know, that's, that's really whenever the worst of the, the cracking happens, so we want to make sure we're up to date on, on what, what roads we're recommending. So, at budget time, we, that's the kind of thing we wouldn't give a list on, but we'd say, we're looking for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for crack sealing, which is, you know, more of a historical, how much we're spending on that kind of activity, so.
Councillor McGillis.
I would just want to make a comment in addition to councillor McDonald. As he said, this is not written in stone, but we were fortunate enough over the years, especially the last term council, county council here, that we received extra funding for different projects, and this is when we decided to add on to the, you know, what roads we wanted, subject to the funding. So, if we are lucky enough to get extra provincial, federal funding, then, you know, this, things can change, and you can, you know, put in maybe a request on what roads that you feel that need to be, either micro-chipped or asphalt. The microchip, myself personally, I'm not a real fan of, never was, you know that? Because I find it's a lot more rougher, and makes a lot more, it's just, it's not as nice as asphalt, and, but it does serve the purpose, right? But anyway, hopefully that we get lucky enough again and get more funding than we previously either applied for, or extra funding coming out from the provincial government, which the feds usually match. So we'll, hopefully that will come again. Just a comment.
Thank you for your comment, councillor Bergeron.
I would like, we've already had a previous four-year plan, right? Okay, so, to make Mr. Lang maybe feel more comfortable, in the last year and the previous year, what was spent on the roads, and we have to keep in mind, the price of labor and materials has really shot up since then.
Yeah, we, so we have, I want to, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but... Right, okay. So, yes, so thank you, Mike. Last year, it was eleven million dollars, eleven-point-one million dollars, and so now we're, obviously, you see the inflation starting to... Okay, so we're in the twelve-million-dollar range, more or less, already, yeah. That's, that's, that is, you know, I guess our experience is showing us, and, and continue to see it through these road need studies that we've done every four years, is that this, the kind of the level we're at is, is, it seems to be the sweet spot. Like, we're not, we're not falling behind, we're not, and, and there is something to be said about, we're not, you know, all of a sudden, we're at a hundred percent, because I, I think you could argue, well, hey, like, we don't have to be at a hundred percent. I think in that seventy percent range is pretty good, and actually, we have, we have, over the years, come up with our percentage, because we were falling way behind, and it's a long story associated with that, but the, the way we're doing the work now is much smarter, the quality of materials is much better, and, and we have, you know, we've done a good job to get to this point, and I think it's, for, for where we sit, it's important to, you know, keep our foot on the gas pedal.
Is there anything further to this four-year resurfacing plan? Well, thanks for all the questions and comments, and I really don't want to weigh into it and extend it, but a four-year plan is needed, and there are deviations from the four-year plan. There are things that crop up. It comes up every year. I, I believe, Mr. Dahan will, will agree, and as most people will, that, at the end of the day, council is making the decisions based on the information provided by the, by staff, and the learned, uh, experience from staff, and we take that into consideration as we move forward. But the four-year plan, we've all heard questions and comments, and so we'll just go to the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. The assumption of the new county road, madam clerk.
Moved by councillor Denham, seconded by councillor Landry, that the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry support in principle the assumption of the proposed Long Sioux Logistics Village Road as a county road, subject to final confirmation through the impending road rationalization review.
Mr. Dahan.
Thank you, and, and I guess one thing I want to emphasize before I start is, it's the in-principle portion of this recommendation in front of council. It's not the, it's not the final. This is just the in-principle support of this. Just, and the reason being is that the developer, you know, as the developer's creating this, this impressive and, I think, game-changing industrial subdivision within Long Sioux, they just really need to make sure they're talking to the right road authority as they're creating their road cross-section, putting their design together, things like that. So, with that, I'll just quickly get into this one. What, what's happening, if you haven't heard before, is there is a Long Sioux Logistics Village being proposed, and it is between the CN railroad tracks, County Road Fifteen, County Road Thirty-five, and Highway Four-oh-One. Quite an impressive piece of land. It is one of the, the proponents indicate one of the only pieces of land available on the CN Montreal, the Montreal-to-Toronto train track that has the ability to have a spur line contiguous along the entire frontage, and that's the big draw for this developer, and the big draw for this development is being able to bring things off of rail, bring it into a, a yard where it can be sorted. A lot of, you know, industrial type of warehousing that can make use of that as well, of, of that, taking advantage of that, and then, of course, proximity to the Highway Four-oh-One. So, it's a very, the, the developer right now is in the draft plan of subdivision. They haven't actually submitted anything yet, but they're working through all the requisite studies and, and requirements, and we're, at the county, are working closely, you know, with the planning department, and South Stormont, Carl and his team at South Stormont, to be able to work with the developer and make sure everything is done in accordance with how it should be done. But the, so the question has come up, you know, who is going to be the road authority that looks after this roadway once it's built? And as we've talked about it, we have, you know, as, as a group, really felt that it, it makes a lot of sense from a, from a county perspective to be a county road. Reason being, it's not just the fact that it's going to be built to a full road standard, so it'll be year-round, fully-loaded roadway. That's one thing, and that's typical. I can't think of a local municipal road in SDNG that is fully-loaded. I'm looking at our CAO, he feels like he, I, I thought he might have, so he might be able to prove me wrong there.
I think occasionally it's fully-loaded.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not by, not legally fully-loaded, but I can't think of one. But, but it's not only that, there's more to it than that. It's really about the type of traffic, like, you know, county roads are intended to have heavy commercial traffic. This is, I mean, it's obvious that this is just going to be heavy commercial traffic. The other thing, too, is just thinking of a level-of-service perspective. If we have this type of activity happening there, it's going to be continuous traffic movement, and we provide twenty-four-seven snow plowing, for example. So, the level of service that that road's going to have in winter time will be significantly different than what the local municipalities provide, and that's, that's good. That's the way it should be. That's, that's the intention of having a different tiered system and different levels of service on these types of roadways. I do note that it is something that was on my to-do list in twenty-twenty-two, and unfortunately, didn't get done, but I am going to be, you know, embarking on it in full force in twenty-twenty-three, and that's actually the more comprehensive review of the roads throughout SDNG. And so this would be one of the ones we'd look at as well, and that's why, again, to come back to this idea of in-principle, subject to that road rationalization review. So we're looking at Finch Rock Borough Boundary Road, for example, and there's a bunch of other roadways across the different municipalities in SDNG, where we need to have a good discussion, does it make sense to be a county road or not a county road? And there's a whole bunch of criteria that go into that, which includes, you know, is it connecting urban centers? Does it have heavy industrial type of use? Is it, does it connect to the Four-oh-One and, and to King's Highways? And there's, there's all sorts of criteria, and, and we'll get into that discussion with council at a later date. That's not the intention here. So, with that, I'll leave it for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dahan. Questions, comments from members of council? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. So, with, with this particular one, I'd probably speak in contravention of this, only because I don't know whether those tax dollars will derive the cost of the, the cost of the road. Like, that's, that's something that's fundamental. We don't want all the citizens to pay for this new growth. And additionally, there are two county roads nearby, and I believe that, like, obviously did some research on the reasons to have county roads, and County Road Fifteen is right there, so, as well as the other, and it's, they're, they're close, right? So, it is a nice level of the service to provide, but I'm thinking, like, where Lactalis used to be, there was a road there that probably had some heavy industrial that was not taken by the counties. Richmond Road in our municipality, and Hay Road also have some decent industries down there. So, it looks like a new one, but I, I think you'll get some support. At least the rationalization study kind of leads to that. I'd just probably vote contrary to this.
Thank you for your comment. Further questions, comments? Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm assuming that the developer will pay to, if this becomes a county road, the developer will be building that road to that standard and paying for it one-hundred percent? Thank you.
Councillor McGillis.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to say that everybody knows how huge this is for the community and the region, and I think that, you didn't mention anything about the EDR and the event that, that it's the element of traffic that's probably going to be deterred, or rerouted off the Four-oh-One. They could use this Highway Two as well, so that's an extra benefit. I think most of it, as you said, will be only truck traffic, and I think that's what it should be there, running between County Road Twenty, Thirty-five and, and County Road Fifteen, Avonmore Highway. Yeah, the benefits are going to be huge for the community and, and the region, and the city of Cornwall. And I think that this, the rail yard, too, has to go as well, and that's going to be, that's going to complement this road going through, too, as well. But most of the, the shipping will be done through rail, and it will be truck traffic, so. But another thing you can mention, too, if you want, Ben, regarding the trade-off, maybe, probably taking over County Road Thirty-six, too, as well.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I think that comes back to the, the study, but Mayor McGillis, or councillor McGillis is absolutely correct. Just south of, of this, on the other side of the railroad tracks, between Fifteen and essentially County Road Two, where the, the municipal building is in South Stormont, is a county road. But there's, there's a great example of a road that had been a county road, has seen the benefit of the growth of Long Sioux, and that's really becoming now more of a local roadway, and I think we could argue that there is, there is, you know, I don't, I don't ever like to think of things as a trade-off, because to me, I always think, if it makes sense, then it, then it should be, and if it doesn't make sense, it shouldn't be straightforward. But, but to councillor McGillis's point, that road is very quickly becoming a local roadway, in my mind, and I think that that's, rationalization study that's going to be completed will, you know, I don't want to prejudge it, but I, I could see that, that it's tending that direction, so, I, you know, in essence, it would, would end up being a flip-flop.
Anything further? We've all heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dahan. Planning the pre-budget approval floodplain mapping for the south branch of the South Nation River, madam clerk.
It's moved by councillor McGillis, seconded by councillor Bergeron, that the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry approves SDG's contribution of ninety-three thousand, two-hundred dollars towards floodplain mapping of the south branch of the South Nation River, and direct staff to include forty-six thousand, six-hundred dollars towards the project in the twenty-twenty-three budget.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Good morning, Warden, and thank you, council. So, this report in your package is part of a program that we started last year, similar to some of our, our neighbors, is to update some of those floodplain mappings. So, last year, council had approved the Eastman Drain, and this is for the south branch of the South Nation River. The intention is to rotate among the municipalities and, and based on some of the priorities we see, receive from the conservation authorities, so they're kind of ranking all the different rivers and, and streams, and where there might be more need for flooding. So this, part of this area has no floodplain mapping at all, and part of it was done in about thirty, thirty-five years ago, using Atari Commodore sixty-four, or something like that, so it's quite old, and we also have the new LiDAR information as well that we're going to get from, instead of five-to-ten-meter contours, probably go for fifteen centimeters, so it'll be more precise and, and more accurate, so people won't, it'll benefit... So people won't, it'll benefit both people looking to build and people looking to expand as well as municipalities sizing their infrastructure. So recommending this is part of this year's budget, and we'll spread it out over next year just to lower it, the overall impact.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Questions, comments from members of council? Seeing none, we've all heard the question. All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Mr. Young, or Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor McGillis, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry receive the Bill 23 Implications for SDG Report, and that council confirms that SDG will continue to require public meetings for plans of subdivision condominium applications to hear from affected residents and stakeholders, and that council direct staff to develop a public consultation policy in consultation with local municipalities to determine the effective format for public consultation for plans of subdivision condominium.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Warden and council. So as many of you know, Bill 23, More Homes Built Faster was, was passed and is partially in effect, and I'm sure at your local level or, or coming up in the new year, you'll get briefings on how this affects your individual municipality. This is just a summary of both countywide and, and local implications, primarily development charges, subdivision, site plan process. So one of the major changes was to do with public meetings, removing requirement to have public meetings for subdivisions. And, and we felt as, as staff, they, they do offer a lot of value, and they also get to hear from residents that may not feel comfortable writing. Maybe they want to have a conversation, talk in person. So we're recommending that SDG continue to, to hold these public meetings or hold them with the local municipality as we do right now. One of the things we could look at is the format. So is a open house style better? Does it have to be at the beginning of a council meeting, or can we change things up a bit? So the, if council approves this direction, we'd, we'd talk with our, our local planners and, and councils, kind of get a flavor of what they'd be looking for, and then include that under the official plan, so it is still statutory and still required. So again, a developer should be participating and, and bringing forward their plan and, and with input from municipal staff and, and council attendance if they'd like as well. So that's our report, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Questions, comments from Mr. Young? Counselor Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. We've all been talking about Bill 23 for quite a bit, and, and everybody scratching their heads and trying to figure out, and I just want to say that this was the plainest thing that I've been able to read so far on it. Thank you and whoever put it together. It was, it made it a lot simpler for me to understand exactly where we're going with this bill. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Bergeron?
Okay, I see from Bill 23 that they don't really want us to have, or the counties to have public meetings. I think that we should, but at the same time, can anything come out of it? Let's say you have people that are really disappointed or unhappy with however the subdivision is going to go. From what I understand from Bill 23, there's really nothing that we can do to make the contractor changes plans. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think it's each municipality at the county level or approval authority is kind of considering whether they want to still have public meetings. And I know talking to some colleagues at other counties, some of them are leaving up to local municipality. Some are saying, let's go as a group, and we still want to hold these meetings. What we can do is put it right in the official plan, so it is a mandatory meeting, that it's, it's not just an optional one, that, that the developers can still, are required to attend and give their presentation. One of the changes that happened a few years ago is they took away their right to appeal plans of subdivision. So ultimately, right now, it's delegated to staff to approve the subdivision. Usually, we, since I've been here and before, we haven't approved one that wasn't supported by the local municipality. So the tradition is that you get all the conditions from your, your local township as well before the county would make a decision. So Bill 23 won't necessarily impact that because there already is no appeal process, and they are required to follow all the policies that council set out and that the province has set out, and the development standards each local municipality has approved as well. So that won't change, but if this would go forward as written, then they wouldn't, there wouldn't be a public meeting. There would just be written responses by a deadline, and after that, we would make a decision. So I, I think this allows for more engagement with the community and, and potential for things to change once you hear all the input. And, and a lot of these meetings can be pretty productive. We do try and explain at the beginning that it's not about the principal development. The official plan may already allow development here, but how does this affect you, and is there anything we can do to make adjustments? So overall, I'd say we may be missing out if we, we don't have these public meetings because council or the staff as well won't hear directly from people as much.
And I totally agree. I think the public should be made, and there should be public meetings, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dencham, followed by Counselor St. Pierre.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. I agree with Counselor Lang. It's, it's a very good report, very well laid out. And I think the other piece that's important in this is that the public meetings are not just one-directional. It's not just that the public is necessarily trying to lay their demands. Quite often, there's a lot of myths that get busted in those conversations, and they go both directions. And it's quite often an opportunity for the developer or for staff to speak to the public in an open forum whereby they can kind of correct some misinformation. And I've actually seen it where there are people who come in very hot and heavy under the collar, and they leave quite happy because they've had a chance to voice their opinion and actually understand the problem through the eyes of, of the developer or through the eyes of staff who can help people look at it. So I, I think it's a good idea, and I support you on that, Peter.
Counselor St. Pierre?
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. I just want to say as part of an individual who works in the land development engineering business, I, I fully support public consultation on planned subdivisions. I agree, it adds value both ways, from a county municipal level, township level, and also from the public level as well. So I, I truly support this.
And Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of concerns that you've identified in here, one of them being site plan control, where developments up to 10 residential units will be exempted from site plan control. That, in combination with architectural details and landscape design, aesthetics will be removed from the scope of site plan control. I mean, those are, those are both concerning and could have a significant impact on our municipalities. Is there any way that we can control those otherwise?
There, there's different things that can be addressed. One of them in particular is lot grading and, and stormwater. As a group at, at the county level and municipal level with our public work directors and planners, we're working on common development standards that we can all use. And some of the municipalities, such as in South Stormont, almost every plan, whether it's subject to site plan or not, has to do a grading plan and, and show where you're on the lot, where the water's going to go, how does it go into the storm infrastructure. Some municipalities that don't have that, this might be a way to, to review those bylaws and say, okay, we can't do site plan. Let's make sure our lot grading policy is still doing best practices for, for stormwater management. For design, for landscaping, a lot of the times, you can still ask for landscaping, it's just the quality. But we, we do have standards that will be suggesting to the municipalities based on input from the conservation authorities, what are the best tree species around here. And, and again, a lot of times when we're working with developers, they just ask, what do you, what do you want us to have? So here's our suggested list. And, and I think we'll still be more of a, a back and forth rather than ask, we can't say you have to have this type of tree with this DBH and, and all the measurements, but we can say, here's the standard, and here's an easy list for you that's available locally. So there's not everything, like, design of buildings unfortunately is completely exempt, so it'll be up to the developer, basically. There's no way that we can regulate it. But for other things, we may be able to update our bylaws and, and standards just to, to give best practices. So we'll be going to municipalities, probably in, in the spring, once that's finalized. It already started, and then this whole bill came out, but it's supposed to be done by February, the joint subdivision manual. And in the meantime, I think a lot of municipalities are, are looking at South Stormonts or, or South Dundases, for examples.
Thank you for that. Just quickly, if I may, Mr. Warden.
Please.
I, I'm glad to hear that, that the conversation will still be able to happen, because I'm sure everyone around the table is seeing the situation where, you know, the developers got, you know, row houses in the back of them are going to be facing up against the, the roadway, and that's what's visible, and it's just one flat, ugly surface. And what we've been able, and, you know, without telling them, you know, how they should side their building or whatever the case may be, you know, we, we said, you know, we need some trees along there in order to be, because the aesthetics would have been terrible. And so, you know, I'm, I'm glad the conversation will be able to happen and, and that those best practices hopefully will be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, we've all heard the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, Mr. Young. We're going to move into bylaws. Madam Clerk, the CAO appointment bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor St. Pierre, seconded by Counselor Dencham, that bylaw number 5380, being a bylaw to appoint Maureen Adams as Chief Administrative Officer Deputy Clerk for the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, effective January 3, 2023, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. As you all know, our current CAO, Tim Simpson, is retiring at the end of this year. Maureen Adams does start January 3. She's here with us today, so this bylaw formally appoints her into the role. You'll also note that she's also being appointed as a deputy clerk, that's standard, moving forward to act up as a backup for the clerk role, but then also to be able to meet with council one-on-one if she sees fit as well in the future. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, we've all heard the question. All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none? That's carried. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the official plan amendment?
It's moved by Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor St. Pierre, that bylaw number 5381, being a bylaw to adopt official plan amendment number 16 to the official plan of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Warden. This is a, a project in North Glengarry, just north of Alexandria. They've applied for severance, and they were required to change the official plan and zoning. It's supported by the township, and there were no public comments against it as well. So we're recommending approval to remove the salvage yard from one part of the property and to change the uses permitted on the other one.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Young. The consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Moved by Counselor St. Pierre, seconded by Counselor Dencham, that all items listed under the consent agenda section of the agenda be received for information purposes.
All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Just a brief update on boards and committees. Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. The Warden and myself will be meeting this week or early in the new year, just to confirm all the various appointments to the county's boards and committees, and then that will come forward at the January 16 meeting for formal approval.
Thank you for that. We're going to move into key information, the 2023 council meeting dates. Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. These are the proposed county council meeting dates for 2023 before you. You will note that we also have a budget meeting scheduled for February 15 and 16 as well. So I'll send out a reminder via email for that as well.
Thank you. Use of SDG 1, Mr. Dehan.
Just very quickly, the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal is doing reconstruction in Cardinal next summer. They want to, or they have asked if it's, if there's any issue with rerouting the EDR north on 18 to 1, rather than, or because of this, right now, the EDR is County Road 2, but that road will be tore right up. So this is just, want to let council know, make sure council's well informed that, of this happening. There is some coincidental work happening on Highway 401. We do see instances of higher EDR use whenever Highway 401 is under construction, just the nature of, of how that, how that is. But it is, most of the work is taking place west, or excuse me, east of County Road 1. There's only just a little piece that's west of County Road 1, so the interchange. So there's only just a little bit that's actually overlapping there.
Thank you, Mr. Dehan. It makes me wonder, before I open it to everyone, will there be signage informing? I think in the last round of council, there was quite a bit of consternation about lack of information for residents. Would signage be appropriate at either end or at any place along 18 informing residents that there's going to be extra traffic? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, EDRs are one of those things. If there's no accidents, it actually will never get used. But we do, we do put up EDR, temporary EDR signage whenever it is enacted. Certainly, if there's, you know, some suggestions that, in terms of informing the residents in advance of this, I'm, I'm happy to, to take that on and, and get that done, if, if there is a way we want to inform residents.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Dencham?
Yes, and through you, Mr. Warden. Do we use or feed Google Maps such that if, if an accident was to happen or whatever, that it would take over, or does that happen naturally? Or is there technology involved in any of this?
So we use municipal 511, and I think a lot of local municipalities use that as well. So that actually feeds into some of the navigation, navigation applications. Google Maps is a beast of its own, and unfortunately, it's very challenging to, they, they really derive their data from cell phones, things like that. So it's very hard to actually feed them, like, to feed them data that they post. Rather, they kind of take what they're seeing. And I'll give you a great example. When we were reconstructing County Road 2, excuse me, Doran Bay, the culvert in Doran Bay, we had it in municipal 511. So the, the apps that are pulling from things like municipal 511, we showed road closed, here's the detour. They were properly navigating it through, but because Google still wasn't doing that, and the reason was because the contractor's cell phones were still showing people going right up to where we said it was closed. So Google's algorithm is saying, no, this road, even though maybe I'm getting information saying it's closed, I still see traffic on it, so it's not closed. So it wasn't rerouting across it. And that's, unfortunately, we can't beat Google. That's, that's what the lesson learned is there.
Thank you, Mr. Dehan. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you go, Mr. Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just, that's this EDR, we're through South Dundas, and we're really pushing more social media and communications to our council. I'd like to work with Mr. Dehan to make sure we get good communications to our residents during this period.
Thank you for that. Anything further from Mr. Dehan? The next slide of Mr. Dehan.
I'm going to have Phil join me up here. I think we've introduced Phil to you. He's our county forest coordinator, and this is about creating a community forest working group. So he's much more, much more informed on, on, on this than, than I ever would be. But we'll just kind of quickly walk you through what the intent of, of what we're presenting to council is here. As council is likely aware, we have almost 10,000 acres of forest. So all these pieces of property are open to the public and used for recreational activities such as hunting, hiking, trapping. We have some very active cross-country ski activities taking place in some of those forests as well. Of those, how many forest properties would, roughly 30 of them, 20, 30 individual properties? Sorry, Phil.
That we have?
Yeah.
105.
100, there you go. But, sorry, but is that, like, I'm talking continu-
Contiguous?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the numbers and I can come back.
The 30, 40 is probably?
Higher than that.
Okay. All right. See, that's why he's here. So of all of these properties, only two of them do have developed trails, and that's Somers Town and Warwick. There are some, we'll call them informal trails, some of our other properties. But of the, of all the forest we have, there's two that have those type of trails. And certainly, we saw through the pandemic and continuing on even to right now, is there is quite a, quite a great amount of public interest and use of those properties, not only Somers Town and Warwick, but a lot of our other properties. And of course, with more public use comes conflict between different users. And, you know, an easy example to understand is people like to hunt, people like to hike, we shouldn't be hunting. We shouldn't be hunting and hiking together. And, and that's the kind of thing that we need to recognize and do a better job of managing. And we recognize we're not doing a good job of managing that right now. So what, what, where this is all going is we are creating internally a forest use policy, and it fits very well into the 20-year management plan we have, which, so we're, we're coming to the end of our 20-year management plan, and we feel that this forest use policy, it's a perfect time to implement this. And what it's intended to do is to help guide the sustainable development and use of our forest and reduce those conflicts between those different users. So to get there, what we're proposing is creating a community forest working group, and that's really going to be functioning as a steering committee that'll help all the decisions that need to be made at council, will help inform how we're making those decisions and the recommendations we're bringing to council. The makeup of this working group, it's in the report, so I won't go over it, but I think, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to say is it captures a lot of different users and different interests. And what we're looking for from council today is just, we want to let you know what we're hoping to do. We've created a draft terms of reference for this community forest working group and looking for some feedback. If there's some feedback, we happily take it and finalize this terms of reference, and if not, we'll continue working ahead with this. Is that good? Perfect. Excellent.
You got the nod of approval from Philip. Yes, and thank you for that presentation. Questions, comments, feedback? Would you like that feedback at a later date, Mr. DeHaan, or are you expecting that at this point?
It's up to council. I mean, we, you know, we do want to get moving on this, so hopefully by early in the new year, we do start forming this working group. You know, again, pending if there's a lot of changes or council wants to hear more about this process or what we're doing, we can, we're happy to come back in January. It just, we do want to, sooner rather than later. That's what I should have said.
Thank you. Counselor Lang, followed by Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I think it's a great idea. The only suggestion I had was just looking at the makeup of it. Is there an interest in having somebody to represent the hunting community? Because that, I think typically is the conflict between hunting and hiking. I think you're right on the money there. But if, if there's no one representing the hunting community, they are going to feel their voices aren't heard. That's all. Thank you.
And if I may, it's, it's a, it's a great point. I do want to also say that what, what we're going to, what we're going to get to is public meetings with the forest use policy, so it's not just this group creates this forest use policy that council approves. Our intention is to go out and make sure we have public meetings, so, and not to take, I, if, if you or someone has a suggestion of who a great advocate from the hunting community perspective is, I have no issue with including, including them on the working group, but I guess my message is that we want to make sure we're engaging the hunting community before this policy passes. That is very, very much top of mind. So I don't know if that reassures you or changes your perspective on that.
Thank you, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it's a terrific idea, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that Counselor McDonald wants to sit on that committee.
Or is he haunted? Anyway, moving on. Further questions, comments about this? So we know feedback's needed, and email, emailing you the information's quite all right, then, Counselor, Mr. DeHaan? Thank you. Thank you. So the next item, please.
I'm going to let Mike lead this one, but really what the intention here is, we want to put on council's radar the, essentially, the necessary investment we need to really start making into our bridges and large culverts, because we do have a demand that, that needs to be met. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Would you like to make a shingle reference first?
Yeah. Got a, got a new analogy.
I'm going to open this one with a joke, because it's going to get a little more serious from here on out. So we have approximately 189 structures on our county roads that are either a bridge or a culvert with a span greater than three meters. And so these structures are captured by, are captured by this requirement that we have to have them inspected in accordance with the Ontario Infrastructure Inspection Manual every two years. The previous inspection was done in 2021. We're going to have another one proposed in 2023. So, so every two years, these structures get looked at, and we will receive a report. It's similar in some ways to the four-year plan. It's kind of like a two-year plan for bridges. And so what we do is we hire a qualified bridge engineer to go out, look at each and every one of the structures, assess its, its, you know, sort of state, and estimate when it might need to be, might need to receive some, some investment to keep it in good shape and get our maximum life out of it, keep it, keep it spanning that, that gap and keep it safe. And so generally, what we, we get is a 10-year sort of capital needs, sort of a maintenance or, in rare cases, a replacement recommendation. So moving on, and this, this, this study is something that we draw and the staff draw on to prepare our budgets year after year and direct attention to specific structures as the, as the recommendations come up. So just for your information here is the past five years' worth of spending on bridges. You will see that it averages a little over $4 million. It has been slightly climbing over the years, you could say. We'll go into some of the recommendations from the past. Now, here in 2015, this is the, the capital needs table that was provided to us, and take, take a moment to enjoy the low costs shown on this table. But I wanted to show you the trend. They, they recommend some work upfront, and then there's sort of this promise that it's going to get better, and you're going to have a lull near the 10-year mark. Here is the 2017 table, and what we've done is we've added the amounts that we budgeted each year onto this table, so that you can see, maybe perhaps in 2019, there was this sudden need for a lot of work, and we, we're kind of hitting the average in those first two years, three years, roughly. Again, there's sort of this promise of a lull at the 10-year mark. Here was the 2019 table, showing you again that we're spending approximately the initial amounts on the table. And here was the last table that we received with the sudden spike showing more than double our typical budgeted amount. And obviously, we couldn't come to council and ask for double the, the bridge budget. And so county staff came up with this plan to, and again, these are recommendations for timely investments. These are, you know, patching, patching the nails, replacing a few shingles, generally not the, the whole, the whole roof replacement scheme. So, you know, if some of these structures do lag by a couple of years, we're, we're just still generally hitting them at the right time with, when it comes to the bridges. You might want to work on them every 30 years. On average, when it comes to the culverts, you're, you're in between 50, 75, 100 years, depending on what they're made out of. So, so the, to slide a few structures by a couple of years, you're still generally hitting that timely investment strategy. So, so we were looking at taking this amount of work that we couldn't budget for and just breaking it up and, and moving it on to future years. That was the plan before inflation, and, and the cost of everything has gone up significantly. So the costs that we were looking at in 2021, when this was done in, in the middle of 2021, when it came time to actually spend that money in 2022, the, the price of the work had gone up 36%. And we have cost estimates from consultants now for the bridges that we intend to do in 2023, and the, the costs have almost doubled, but they were estimated to be in, in 2021, before, before we really saw that incredible increase in inflation. So just going back to some of the plans for this year, we had a budget of $5.1 million. The tenders started coming in. The values were more than we had budgeted for each of those structures. We canceled certain projects. We took the funding for those projects. We spread them out on the other projects. We were able to accomplish three out of the four planned bridge rehabilitations. We were able to accomplish three out of the five culvert replacement projects, and even at the end of the year, we were still over budget.
Sorry, if I may, so just stated another way, we had nine planned projects at budget time, and we were only able to finish six of them, and we needed more money than we actually budgeted for.
And, and so now we're, we're, most of the, the bridges out there are done. There's still a little bit of cleanup work being done at, at two of them. We're thinking about 2023 now. I'm proposing a budget of 5.9, so when we look back at those four to $5 million a year budgets, we're noticing a significant increase here, and this is going to accomplish two bridges. However, they are two of our bigger, more significant bridges. They have a, a, a need for that much work to be done. That's going to be about $4 million between, four, four and a half million dollars between the two of them. This is also going to allow us to pre-purchase girders for the increment bridge replacement. And just to give you an idea of the increment bridge, it was built in the mid-1960s. The original design allowed the salt to infiltrate down between the delicate girders that the bridge was made out of. And so the two center girders have had chlorides attacking the, the concrete and the steel in those two center girders since, since the bridge was built. It was rehabilitated in the mid, mid-1990s, and they, they addressed that issue and they sealed the top, but the chlorides are still in there. So after, we're about 60, 65 years now, the bridge is done. It, it is in need of a superstructure replacement. Anyway, the, the abutments are still in decent condition. They'll need some miscellaneous concrete repairs, but we're looking at about $2.1 million just to replace the superstructure on this bridge. So not even the entire structure, just the top half. And that's, that's one of the rare cases where we do have to look at, at replacing a structure. Generally, we can, we can touch up what's, what's already there for, for a lot less. But as it is, we have a backlog of about $4.2 million between increment bridge and two other structures, one that we wanted to get to last year, one that we wanted to get to this year. And, and those, those structures are sitting there with shelf-ready designs that we want to try and get to before the bridge deteriorates beyond the point that those designs aren't necessarily appropriate anymore, that we would have to have it sort of updated at additional So we, when we started to come to terms with where we are in terms of the backlog and the budgets, we did a, the staff did a review of the 2021 OCM data. I went and visited several bridges. I looked at the state that they were in. There, you could say the projection underestimated the investment needs, and we look at the, the trends each year, we can see that there has been a bit of a history of underestimation long-term. I suppose you can't call up for repair what maybe you don't necessarily see when you're going out to look at these structures. Certainly, 10 years down the road is, is a long time to try and anticipate some of the deterioration that might happen. You know, it's brewing underneath the surface of the concrete, and then it, it spalls and pops off, and then you can see what's happening. Our program would need approximately $4 to $5 million to catch up, and it would need approximately $6 million per year for the next five years, we, we think would be a sufficient level to stay on top of keeping these structures in a, in a, in a good state. However, there's, there is some uncertainty with that as we continue to grapple with inflation, and whether it will continue to go up, level out, or what's going to happen. Perhaps you guys can look into your crystal balls and help us out there. And, and just looking long-term in the future, we will have another OCM study completed this coming year, so that will give us another snapshot of the, the health of the system. And I just wanted to end on some of the, the items that, some of, some of the things that we're doing out there in the field to try and, and stretch the life on these structures and preserve the dollars that are spent. We don't, we, we try not to put expansion joints in anymore on, on these bridges. They, they do fail unless you have somebody going out there year after year and looking at the bridges when they're in a wet condition. You don't see where the, the salt brine might be leaking in the wintertime. The semi-integral conversion really protects the girder ends and keeps the brine off of them, and if a bridge is young enough. So for example, the Martin Town Bridge was built in the 80s. It has an expansion joint. It makes sense to convert that one to a semi-integral next year if we can. And then for the remainder of the life of that bridge, the brine will not be able to directly access the girder ends, which are, are pre-cast, pre-stressed. They're delicate. They have minimal concrete cover on the steel. You really want those things as sheltered as possible. We, we are doing currently minor maintenance with the construction supervisor bridges. We're looking at more opportunities for more detailed maintenance and, and try and get at small issues before they turn into big issues. And when we're, when we're doing the, the bridge replacements, we're eliminating conventional bridges, and we're going full integral where we can. So increment would be a semi, because we're keeping the abutments, but on, on new bridges, that's, that's the, the trend, protect those girder ends from the outset. And so that's the, the last slide. I think, your questions now? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janz. Questions, comments? The stunned silence. No doubt. Moving forward to street lighting review. Will you be able to do that in seven minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where did the mouse go? Oh, that's where it is. Got it. Okay, just very quickly, in the street lighting review, we had been requested to review County Road 22, County Road 30 for potential inclusion of a streetlight. It's a three-legged intersection in a rural area just east of Maxville. It's, and for council's information, this is the kind of request we get on a very regular basis, very regular, but we get it several times a year. We have a policy that we follow and a process that we follow, follow to evaluate it. In this circumstance, it was, it was not warranted to have a streetlight, but what we did note in that analysis is that it was one of those instances where the need for a streetlight, depending on traffic volumes, or if there is, you know, like, things like accident frequency does play into it. So if those things change, that it would, you know, fall into warranting a streetlight, it is a little bit of a dangerous intersection as well in terms of the visibility as a result of that cedar hedge you can see there located on private property. So there are some challenges there, too. So we wanted to bring it to council's attention. It, again, not warranted per the policy, but I could see that in this instance, it might be something council feels that is an important thing to look at. We did get another request recently through the Township of North Dundas, their office, so we'll take a look at that in the very near future, and similarly, they run it through that process. So question one was, does council want to entertain the, the opportunity for a streetlight at 22 and 30? From a cost perspective, Derek is, unfortunately, just stepped out, but we're, you know, it's usually in the $4,000, $5,000 range if there's a pole available. So it's not a very onerous cost. It is a cost, but it's not compared to if you needed to actually illuminate a, a big area. It's relatively inexpensive, because it's just amassed on the pole, and the biggest challenge is getting approval from hydro, rather than actually putting these things up. So that's, that's number one. Number two that I wanted to bring to council's attention is the policy itself. As you can see, it's attached to the report. It's a pretty old policy, and if there's some, I guess, appetite for us to take a look at that policy, I think, I think it's worth looking at, and if council wants us to take a different direction on streetlights or anything in there, I'm happy to take that feedback right now and start working on a updated policy.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaan. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Ben, and Mike, for, for actually looking into this and doing the examination of, of it. I do, I do think that it'd be worthwhile to review this policy, given that it's working from Transportation Association Canada Guides from 2001 and 2006. So it is old. This, this intersection in particular is terrible, terrible at night. It is, it... It is, um, it, you, you, you come into the intersection blind. You can't see it until you're on, on top of it. And those who know it anticipate it and sort of like are looking, well, it's somewhere around here. So notice slow down. But anybody who doesn't, uh, we, is going to miss it. There's the, at night, on a dark night, it's very, it's very treed. It's very closed in. Um, and in the winter inevitably, um, you know, people come across the intersection quickly, slam on the brakes and I don't know. I, every year I see a couple of cars in the ditch. I don't think they report it to OPP because they just get, you know, the local farmer to come and pull them out. So we don't have statistics to actually demonstrate really how dangerous it is. But, uh, I've witnessed it. I travel that, that intersection all the time. And, um, if council's willing to consider it, I think it would be a very worthwhile investment.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor, uh, Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, um, Ben, in your expertise, if we were to relook at the policy and it does sound like the right thing to do, uh, would it make a stronger case in, in your estimation for this? And the other part of that question as well is that, uh, one of the options is to simply monitor this. And I'm not sure what monitor this on an ongoing basis works out in terms of costs, in terms of keeping an eye on this, whether that's a lot of work or just a little bit of work or no work at all really. Because if, if the cost to monitor it starts to approach the cost of actually putting the light up, why wouldn't we just go ahead and, and, and take that approach?
Okay, uh, so for the policy side of things, I mean, one of the things I've been mulling over just from my office is, you know, we, we, we run through this, it's a yea or nay through that, through that kind of, we'll call it the, the worksheet. Maybe there's an argument to be made that we should be illuminating each of our county road intersection, county road, county road rural intersections. And I'm not, you know, I, I say that very seriously, that, um, because some do, some don't. Why, maybe we have to take the position, you know what, this is an added safety element that we want to add to our, uh, intersections, uh, in rural. And I, so my point being is I'd like to do like an environmental scan across some different counties and see what they're doing. Because, uh, I'm not, I don't know if I'm convinced that the, the, the way we do it right now is absolutely correct. So, um, that's the kind of thing that may come out of that policy review. And I think that, I, I assume council would welcome those kinds of discussions. Uh, cost to monitor is not very, like, uh, when I say monitor, I'd say we'd, you know, uh, once a year, take a look at if there's accidents reported, check the traffic counts to see if they're dramatically increasing or not. And, and that's the kind of thing we'd look at. And if we see a big variation, then run it through the worksheet again if we hadn't put it up. So, um, you know, minor costs, that really isn't, uh, the streetlights more than the monitoring.
Thank you. We're quickly approaching noon. Uh, so is there anything quickly that could be, uh, said to council, uh, to, I keep on thinking you're a counselor. You look like one, that's why. To, uh, Mr. Dehan, uh, before we, uh, take off for our social committee lunch. Yes, Counselor McDonald.
Um, it's, it's, I, I think it's a small cost. It's a dangerous road, drive it as well. We, we obviously believe in it, so we would, uh, if, if council would entertain it, we would split the cost.
Um, I think the direction that I'd like to, that I understand is that there's direction there from South, uh, from North Glengarry. But I would also like to see that a fulsome, uh, review and the costing. Uh, cause I too, uh, uh, believe that it's only longstanding tradition that we don't have lights. And I think we need to advance ourselves and, uh, the quality of our roads is such that I do believe the quality of our roads and the lighting is part of that and the safety. So I think we need to have a, uh, a better, a better understanding of the challenges in front of us. That will be shared by all of us as we go down this path. May I? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dehan.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, if I could, and, and just because it doesn't meet the policy, I think the idea would be to have a resolution just so that way I'm, you know, it's not like I'm kind of doing something without, uh, without council direction. That's contrary, contrary, uh, makes it sound like I'm being a bad person, contrary to policy or isn't. Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, so, uh, I'd, uh, I'd sort of like to somewhat stick to the timeline. We have a resolution in front of us. Do I have a mover, Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, I'll, I'll move the, the dra, uh, not move it, I will read it first and then ask for a mover in second. Very supportive of this. Um, it, the draft motion reads that staff be directed to install a streetlight at inters, at the intersection of County Road 30 and County Road 22 in North Glengarry, and that staff be directed to review the streetlight policy and bring it back to council in the new year for further review.
Is there a mover?
Moved by Counselor McDonald.
And seconded by, uh, Counselor, uh, McGillis. Um, we've heard the question, all those in favor? Uh, opposed? See none that's carried. Thank you. At this time, uh, it's, uh, we'll take a, I'd like to say a half an hour break for lunch. And I'd like to do that. Uh, we have, uh, I believe probably some lengthy things to discuss before we break for the day, before we break for closed session. So, uh, Madam Clerk, where will we, where do we eat?
It's, uh, set up just outside the second floor boardroom. So if you follow me, I can, I can show you.
Thank you. Let's break for lunch.
So, uh, welcome back. I hope everyone enjoyed the lunch provided to us by the social committee and, uh, raffle tickets were available for sale. Council McDonald's secured the winning one, uh, already. Uh, so we have our presentation of findings and recommendations in County Road forty-three and County Road seven ready. We have, I'm not sure of the who was presenting to us, but I'll leave it up to Mr. Jahan to do the introductions. Mr. Jahan?
Perfect. Actually, I'm not even doing the introduction. I'm gonna let Mike do that, but I did want to say, um, on behalf of myself, Tim, it's been a pleasure working for you. This is my last report with USC A O and I've appreciated all the guidance and, and, and support over the years. So best wishes in retirement. So that's, uh, I did want to get that out before the end of the meeting. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, so, uh, just to back up a little bit earlier this year, council asked us to, um, have a look at the intersection of County Road forty-three and, and seven, uh, which has been looked at many times in the past. And, uh, so the discussion this time settled on having an independent third-party engineer, uh, look at that. So, uh, county, uh, staff, uh, reached out and, um, uh, it was Parsons who engaged to, uh, to complete this study. And so they've, they've completed their study and they prepared their report, uh, which was circulated to each of you. And, um, and Chris Redden from Parsons here is going to be giving a presentation on their investigation and their findings. And, uh, so now I will, um, turn it over to you, Chris, uh, to, uh, take it away.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Chris Redden. I'm a senior transportation engineer with Parsons. Uh, I will pull up the presentation now and I'll, I'll run you through it. Um, so hopefully you can see, uh, the presentation now.
Yeah, we can see it, Chris.
Okay, great. So today what I'm gonna run through, I'll start with an introduction to our study, um, go over the, our mandate in the study. I'll review the study itself. Some of the existing safety features we saw, road geometry, sightlines, collision data. We took a look at the warrant for certain improvements. Um, then I'll get into more detail on the, uh, alternative safety improvements and interventions that could be made and we'll close up with a conclusion and some recommendations. Uh, so our mandate was of course to perform a safety review of the intersection of County Road forty-three and County Road seven. Um, so we understand this intersection's been labeled as a dangerous intersection by residents. It's got an average of one to two collisions per year. Uh, there's also frequent close calls, um, that are reported, but they're not formally recorded. So those ones are harder to quantify, but we, we are aware there's an issue there. Um, in terms of specifics of the intersection, both roads are two lanes, eighty kilometer an hour speed limit. Um, we have Chesterville to the north, Dunbar to the south, uh, Goldfield to the east and Maple Ridge to the west. Um, west of the intersection, uh, there are curves in County Road forty-three. Uh, it's a nice gradual curve leading into the intersection. And on County Road forty-three, we have right turn lanes in both directions. So some of the topics we reviewed, uh, the previous safety improvements, we looked at the geometry of the intersection. We looked at the collision data. Um, and the, the warrants for different improvements. Uh, the guidelines we referenced include the Transportation Association of Canada attacks, uh, geometric design guide for Canadian roads, as well as the Ontario traffic manuals. We completed a site visit September twenty-first this year and we had a traffic count completed on September twentieth this year to be sure that we have up-to-date data on that front. Um, some of the things we observed, uh, so there's oversized stop signs on the, uh, County Road seven approaches with advanced warning stop ahead signs. Um, there's rumble strips on the approaches on County Road seven to help make drivers aware of the need to stop. Uh, there's painted stop bars as well as white transverse bars on County Road seven. So these white bars get closer to each other, the closer you get to the intersection, um, to give that feel that you're speeding up to help encourage people to stop. Um, one asterisk is the south approach was recently repaved before our site visit. So at the time that we were there, these features hadn't been put back yet. Um, overhead, there's a, uh, red, yellow flashing, um, uh, flashing beacon. So it'd be yellow facing the directions that don't have to stop and flashing red facing the directions that do have to stop. Um, there's advanced flashing beacons on County Road forty-three. So we've got these warning signs with yellow flashing lights. Uh, so that drivers approaching in those directions are aware of the intersection coming up. And the intersection itself has street lighting, uh, to improve visibility at night. Uh, in terms of the roadway geometry and sightlines, um, it's a good angle. It's close to ninety degrees. Uh, the terrain's very even. The sightline criteria are all met. Um, so it's pretty open in that regard. Uh, we took a look at the collision data. Uh, we reviewed the previous five years, which is a pretty typical, uh, time window to review for this type of study. Um, we noticed that there were an average of two collisions per year over the five-year period with twenty-twenty having an especially high count. Uh, more than the other years of the collisions, we found that eight of the ten collisions were southbound vehicles that stopped and then proceeded when it was not safe to do so. Um, and the other collisions included a southbound vehicle that didn't, uh, didn't stop at all. Uh, the average number of collisions is comparable to similar intersections in the rural areas of Ottawa nearby. Um, but we have to be cautious with those comparisons. Uh, collision data is, it's relative to the area that you're in. Uh, the funding for safety improvements should be spent where it's gonna have the most effect. And, uh, the funding for safety improvements, of course, goes by jurisdiction. The funding availability and improvement needs are, are gonna vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So just because it's similar to another one, um, doesn't mean that it doesn't, doesn't necessarily warrant improvement. Um, most collisions for the southbound vehicles occurred during daytime in clear weather, which is a very interesting finding. More often we'll see collision patterns during poor weather, poor visibility nighttime. So to see these all occurring clear weather during the day was, was interesting. So I took a closer look at the pattern and we observed that the date and time of the collisions indicate that sun glare may have been a factor. Um, the angle of the sun was often facing the driver's eyes as they made the decision to proceed when it was not safe to do so. So on the left here, I've got an image kind of illustrating the effects that sun glare could have uh, on a driver. So we took a look at the, the existing intersection volumes with that new count we had completed. Um, we did note no traffic issues or conflicts were observed during data collection, although that's only one single day. So that's not necessarily a surprise. Um, so we checked the warrants for various improvements. Uh, so adding left turn lanes to County Road forty-three was found to be not warranted. Adding an always stop control was considered, but it was found to be not warranted. Uh, traffic signals were considered, but they were found to be not warranted. We also considered adding a roundabout to this location. Uh, this assessment's more subjective than the other warrants. There isn't, uh, a set of numerical criteria that we can check. Um, so we did an early review and it looks like a roundabout could be suitable for this location. They're usually safer than two-way stops, but similar performance to always stops. Um, the downside, of course, being the cost of implementation and maybe it's not economically justified to add one. Um, something else we checked the warrant for was the light embedded traffic, uh, stop sign. So that's a stop sign with, uh, flashing red LEDs around the perimeter to really draw attention to it. Uh, we found that was not warranted as well. Um, so we started by looking at alternative safety improvements in terms of the ongoing construction, um, because it was a little more pressing with the work going on at that time. Um, so for the pavement markings, we're recommending to repaint the stop bar and repaint the transverse white bars on the south approach. So these images you can see to the left is an image from our site visit before these were added back. On the right, this was prior to construction, what it looks like. So we recommended that those get added back. Um, in terms of cost, uh, we estimated no additional cost, uh, on the basis that reinstatement was assumed to be included in the scope of construction. Uh, the rumble strips were another one. We took a close look at. Um, we heard that there were vehicles reported to drive in the oncoming lane to avoid the rumble strips, which is a safety issue. Uh, vehicles were observed driving with the right wheels on the paved shoulder to avoid them, which is also an issue. And we're seeing evidence of the asphalt, uh, deteriorating faster near the rumble strips than in other areas. Uh, so based on this behavior we're seeing from drivers, we're recommending to omit putting back the rumble strips on that recently repaved portion. And we're recommending to remove the ones that are there on the other leg. Um, so the leg that's under construction, it would be no cost or maybe a small credit depending on how, uh, reinstatement was or wasn't scoped in that construction project. And then the cost of grinding out the asphalt and paving it back smoothly, um, including fixing the areas that are deteriorating right beside the rumble strips. We estimate that that cost about ten thousand dollars. Um, now I'm getting into some of the, what we would call minor interventions. So these are things that are, um, less costly, um, less invasive. Um, so we, we think the county should consider installing signs saying cross-traffic does not stop on County Road seven to improve awareness for drivers. Um, we estimate it to cost fifteen hundred dollars, not very expensive. Um, and it could improve awareness of the issues that are going on. Uh, another measure that we could be considered is adding two-way tabs for the stop signs. So it's an infographic tab. This would go directly below the stop signs. And it shows that there's stop signs on the two legs, but not on the other two legs. So this is, uh, something that's commonly used in the city of Ottawa where there may be confusion with drivers. Uh, because this goes on the existing posts that you already have for the stop signs. It's a very low cost. We estimate about four hundred dollars to add the two tabs. Um, in terms of the light embedded traffic stop sign, so I mentioned that, uh, that was not recommended, not warranted. Um, it's because guidelines indicate that they should not be used in conjunction with that overhead flashing beacon that's already there. Um, it could be too much visual conflict and start adding confusion for drivers. And that overhead flashing beacon is considered to be a stronger measure. I would not recommend taking it out to replace it with one of these stop signs. Um, the cost would be for that measure about eight thousand dollars to add those two signs. Um, and the last minor intervention we wanted to list, uh, would be to consider a public information campaign to raise awareness of this issue. Um, encouraging motorists to only proceed when it's safe to do so, when they can see it's safe to do so. Um, on the right, I just have a, a website clip here from your website to illustrate it. Uh, the cost of this could be very low, zero dollars for staff time only to maybe make a website posting, some social media posts. And then of course the cost can go up, uh, to pay for advertising online, to pay for advertising on the radio to print, print leaflets. So really it could be any budget assigned to this. Um, now I'm gonna get into the major interventions. So these things more are more costly, more invasive. Um, so I did mention the volume warrant is not met for the always stop control. There's also a specific collision warrant, uh, for always stop control. Now, while it's not met, we're very close to meeting it. Um, and depending on how the next few years play out in terms of collision counts, um, it could become warranted, uh, within the next couple of years. Uh, so the counties could make an owner's decision to install the always stop sign now regardless of warrant. It would be expected to address many, if not all of the recorded collisions that we've seen. It would help mitigate the sun glare issue because it's easier to check the adjacent stop bars than to try and identify and assess the speed of vehicles approaching you from a distance. Uh, the downside on this one is it impedes traffic on County Road forty-three. Uh, could increase driver frustration. Drivers can become unpredictable when they're frustrated. Uh, also if this type of thing isn't common in the area on major roads, there's the risk that drivers won't be expecting it and could miss the stop sign. Once those expectation, expectations change, um, a driver missing the stop sign could become more dangerous. Uh, so we estimate the cost of this one to be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to put in the required signage. Uh, traffic signal. So as I mentioned, the warrants are not met for traffic signals. Uh, the counties could make an owner's decision to install them anyways. Uh, they would be expected to address many, if not all of the recorded collisions. Um, they would, of course, also help with the sun glare issue. Um, there would still be some risk with respect to sun glare for right turn on red maneuvers because you still have to look for oncoming vehicles at a distance and assess their speed. Um, but of course right turns on red could be prohibited with, uh, some add-on signage at the cost of more traffic delays. Uh, traffic signal would interrupt the flow of less vehicles than an always stop, but the ones that do get stopped, uh, are gonna get stopped for longer. We estimate the cost for this one would be about a million dollars to add in. Um, there's also, of course, the roundabout. Again, it would mitigate, uh, the type of collisions we're seeing. It reduces the speed of approaching vehicles and reduces the angle of approach at the conflict points. Um, so the collisions that do occur end up being, uh, less severe, less risk of injury, less risk of fatality. Um, it would also help with the sun glare issue. It's reducing the driver workload. So drivers only have to look in one direction to see whether it's safer to proceed. And the vehicles that are approaching are much slower and much closer. So they're easier to perceive. Would also interrupt fewer vehicles than an always stop and, uh, we'd expect it to introduce less delay than a traffic signal. It would also cost approximately a million dollars to implement here. So in terms of conclusions and recommendations, uh, the intersection has good clear sightlines. The collision counts comparable to similar intersections in the city of Ottawa. Many interventions are already in place. Um, and generally they should be reinstated and maintained with the exception being those rumble strips, which we're recommending to take out because they're not performing as intended. Um, the warrant's not met for always stop controller traffic signals. Uh, this location could be suitable for a roundabout if the decision's made to make the investment. Um, in terms of the frequent close calls, this is something I wanted to touch on. They're reported anecdotally, but we don't have any formal data on them. We do have the opportunity now to use emerging technology to help better quantify this. Um, so what we can do is we can collect video and put it through AI analytic software. I've got an image on the left here showing what the AI will assess for us. So it'll track the paths of vehicles. It, it's a little small to see, but it takes the vehicles with the speed they're traveling and will highlight near misses. Um, so you could video record for an extended period. We'd recommend at least three weekdays, but more is better. Um, and then this AI software will highlight these issues so we could review them in detail and figure out what exactly is going on and what the best measures are to mitigate them. Uh, so this additional analysis we expect would cost about five thousand dollars. Uh, the sun glare issue could also be reviewed during, during suitable dates and times, uh, to confirm whether this is, uh, the cause of some of these collisions. during, during suitable dates and times to confirm whether this is the cause of some of these collisions. And we'd expect that to cost about five thousand dollars as well to do further study in that regard. So the implementation of one of the major interventions could also be considered. All three of the choices are expected to, to mitigate the issues we're seeing. Traffic signals are not warranted and expensive. The roundabout could be suitable, but is also expensive. The always stop is nearly warranted, very cost effective, but passes on the highest delays to users. In terms of needing to stop and wait on County Road forty-three regardless of whether there's a car coming on County Road seven. So if the decision's made to not implement any of these major interventions, then we would recommend for county staff to continue monitoring the recorded collisions at this location because we are close to that always stop warrant and it could become warranted within the next few years. So we'll stop here and see if there's any, any questions, anything I could help with.
Thank you for the presentation, Chris. So questions, comments from members of council? Counselor Bergeron.
I know that corner very well. And I, I definitely am not for traffic lights or a, a roundabout because it's way too expensive. I still can't understand why there are so many accidents because the orange flashing light is there, the rumble bars, they wake you up. I don't quite agree with removing the rumble bars because I have noticed that there's a lot of distracted driving these days. People not paying attention to the road. And I think that when you hit that rumble, rumble bar, it wakes you up. And you go, oh my, you know, there's something ahead. And I think at this point, I like the idea of a big yellow sign that says, you know, cross-traffic, do not stop. But otherwise, I, I just can't see the expense of putting a light roundabout and even a stop sign because as he said, there, for the amount of traffic that there is on forty-three right now, it would really annoy a lot of people to have a stop sign there.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to Counselor St. Pierre and then Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, through you, Warden Fraser. Question I have on your collision, it says eight out of ten, eight out of the ten collisions were southbound vehicles. I'm, I'm curious to know if the collisions were from eastbound and westbound. So what was the predominant collision, east and west? Was it one or the other? Or do we even have that data?
It was generally a mix of the two. The data's not always clear. It comes down to what the responding officer reports. So what we're seeing with those collisions is, yeah, vehicles are coming to a stop and then they're choosing to go ahead. Even though a vehicle's coming at them at speed. So either they've misassessed the speed or did not perceive the vehicle. There wasn't a clear pattern for east or west. The pattern that I did see is the direction of the vehicle was the direction the sun was in at the time.
Okay, just wondering if, sorry, through you, I'm here, Ward, subsequent, if there was a thought about lowering the speed limit just for a certain section through that intersection. I'm thinking that maybe people aren't anticipating the speed of oncoming vehicles. I know you say that some of the vehicles weren't stopping, but obviously some of them were. And I just wonder if that was ever explored, just to lower the speed limit, maybe down to sixty through a small section. I'm just thinking if you're going eastbound and you're coming along with that, that curve, that if people are not anticipating the speed of oncoming, oncoming traffic, so I just wondered if that was ever explored.
So lowering the speed limit for something like this is not something we would normally recommend. Problem is posting signs isn't the most effective at slowing down vehicles. And what you could end up with is creating a speed differential where you have a fraction of vehicles do respect the sign and do slow down. And then that's what crossing traffic expects. And then you have a vehicle coming along who's just annoyed by the lowered speed limit and decides to continue at their speed anyways. So I guess the, the answer is we, we find that's not very effective and can actually be risky.
Thank you, Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Is there any data that talks to whether or not these are local residents? I know there's privacy issues, but in terms of maybe the postal code, whether these are people who are used to the intersection and therefore kind of tend to blow through it more quickly. The other point too, I, I think I would support the yellow sign as well, a little, it's a low cost and it may on approach help with that. And I'm also wondering whether there's any new technology that's coming out. I know quite often it's about speed and, and we can put up the radar signs that flashes what the, what the speed is. Whether or not there's any technology that says, you know, there's an oncoming car coming from the east or coming from the west at that stop sign. So that it says, it warns you that there is a, a, a car, a car approaching from either the east or the west one when you're southbound.
Chris, I'm going to take that first one regarding the locals. Because I didn't share that data with you in, in the full extent. One of our, one of the conditions of our agreement with the province of Ontario in obtaining this data is that we do have to keep private data to ourselves. We have secrecy requirements. And so I can share aggregate data, for example, with the consultant, but when anything that comes to personally identifiable information or even, you know, close to it, we, we don't, we don't share that. So I did tell Chris, the certain, certain people involved were from certain parts of the region. I think I gave like, like general municipal names, but that was it. So the vast majority of these were local or relatively local. And I would say that out of the ten collisions, let's say, you know, two, two parties per collision, I think only one of them was from outside the region. Eastern Ontario within an hour's drive. Everybody else was either within, within a half an hour or forty-five minutes of the area. And so most of them should be relatively aware of the, the transportation fabric out here. And then I'll turn it back to Chris for the, your comment about the cross-traffic does not stop and the emerging tech. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a really good idea, a really good question about the emerging technology. I'm not aware of any product available on the market that would say, make a light flash or something like that when vehicles are approaching. It does seem like something that's technologically feasible, so I, I, I hope someone will create that. But I'm not, I'm not aware of something you could purchase at that, at this time to do that.
Counselor Landry.
I guess through you, Mr. Warden. So I guess I, I gotta say, so the five years that data was collected of those ten motor vehicle accident at the intersection, was everything in place as far as the, the beacon light, the rumble strips, the white bars, the oversized stop sign? Were, were they all in place over the full five years or did that come in increments over the, the five years?
I can, I can take that one. No, they, all of, like, that flashing warning light's been up, I think even before my time at the county. Similarly, the beacon, the white painted lines, that's older than five years for sure. The rumble strips probably six to seven years old at this point, so they've been there for some time. So yeah, everything's been there. And that's been the, I, I think, to be honest with you, that's been the conundrum we've been faced with, is that we have all of these things that we've done at this intersection, yet we still continue to see some challenges there.
So again, the sign is not a big deal, which I would support. I'm just saying, okay, there's distractions. So there, there's more attention deficit, I think, might be a way to, to look at it. And I don't know if that's how you, you get that answer from, from engineers. I don't, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, for giving me a second chance here. From the data where you say that the people are southbound and that they're actually stopping and then still deciding to cross. The issue is probably the car is speeding on Highway forty-three. Because if you see a car coming and especially looking, if I'm going southbound, there's a curve right there on my right. And if someone is going ninety-six kilometers or a hundred kilometers instead of eighty and you're stopped and you kind of just see that car just coming around the corner anticipating maybe eighty and they're coming at a hundred, well, yes, you will be hit. And so I think one of the main issues about this corner is the speeding on Highway forty-three.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further to that? From members of council? So some of the thoughts that have been bandied about are the cross-traffic does not stop sign, I believe, Mr. Dahan? In the traffic circle. Not, not at this point in time, I'm sure. I, I, I've grown up in that area. I, I know that intersection fairly well. And it is, it is a conundrum and it's, I was, I don't want to say satisfying, but it was, it was nice to see the information provided from from the consultant about the daytime collisions and the possibility of road of glare in the afternoon. And anyone traveling and looking to the, to the west in the afternoon, I'm sure would be struck by the sun shining in their face. It reminds me of an intersection that I used to travel in, around Montreal and you, you couldn't drive it in the afternoon. It was, the sun was coming down and there was about four lanes coming into three or four spots there. I'd like to see some more information collected about, if it's at all possible, Mr. Ahan, about the, the the daytime collisions. And if that is an issue, I'm not sure how we're going to deal with the, the glare being the, the concern. But I think at this time, my thought on it as well is the cross-traffic does not stop. And I'm not too sure about the two-tab stop sign. I'm glad it was explained to me what it meant. Because I didn't recognize what it did, did whenever I was going through the package. So, Mr. Ahan, what type of resolution are you looking for or comments from council?
Well, we can, we, staff can take this back. We were really interested to hear council's feedback on this one. What we can do is in the January meeting, come back with essentially a resolution with some recommendations on, you know, what, what to move forward with. Because I do hear the cross-traffic does not stop. It sounds like there's some support there and that's something we've recently done in South Glengarry as well, so consistent. The one I'm interested, I've heard rumble strips, yes, come back, but I don't know if that was, everybody agrees with that or not. So I'd love to just get a sense if, if council wants us to, to reinstate those as well. And, and then beyond that, maybe make our, you know, talk with Chris and his team and, and make a, you know, look, look at the sun glare issue because I do think that was one that stuck out to me as well. It's a very interesting finding that perhaps we need to take a look at a little bit closer. I, I don't know how we're going to solve the problem of the sun. But, but maybe just making, you know, if, if we're well informed that that is a potential cause of it, then, then perhaps, you know, at least we can turn our minds to how we resolve that issue, so.
So the feeling about rumble strips, ladies and gentlemen. Counselor Broad.
Yes, thank you, Warden Fraser. So my experience is I traveled that road many times for hockey season. I do see and have seen many people go off the road or move into the other lane to avoid those rumble strips. And if people are stopping at the stop signs and then getting it in the interception, the rumble strips are preventing the accidents. So I'd be okay without the rumble stims to see what happens next.
Thank you. Counselor Lang.
Don't travel the north-south road very often. Do travel the forty-three often enough. And I'm just going to throw it out there just to be the devil's advocate. If most of the accidents are after people have stopped, maybe the rumble strips worked, they got them to stop. But there's something else that's the problem. I'm not saying to get rid of them or to leave them. I'm kind of, I would more prefer to hear what North Dundas people have to say that are there all the time, but, but maybe, maybe they're working, people are actually stopping.
So a comment from North Dundas, we've heard Counselor Bergeron twice now. But I, I, the rumble strips, as Counselor Broad has mentioned, people avoid them. And people travel on the shoulder to get away from them. They travel on the, the, the northbound people are on the southbound side to to, just watching. Yeah, well, they're, they're, they are, they're being avoided and they cause other concerns. Whenever the people travel in the, in the lanes they're not meant to travel in or travel on the shoulder and, and tear off the side of the road. I'm not sure to what advantage they truly are. I think that the, the one lane without the rumble strip, I think we should just leave it in that fashion and and maybe that, that the proof will be in the pudding whenever we see there's a difference between the, the southbound that has the rumble and the northbound that doesn't have the rumble to see what happens as we go down the road. That's my thought about the rumble strips, that there, there's, anecdotally, I, I speak to many people. It's been brought to my attention that they're quite happy to tell me that they avoid it at all costs. They just travel in the, in the lanes they're not meant to travel in, which is not what the intention is. Any other comments from maybe South Dundas? That's the feeling from North Dundas. There's nothing further? Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You too. Madam Kirk. So we have upcoming official plan amendments. Mr. Young.
Oh, that was the wrong red light. Just to make council aware, several projects that are coming forward, there may be public meetings at your local councils. And in some cases, we'll have them at before a county council meeting or a special meeting, sometimes just with the warden presiding. And most of these are implementing studies or legislation that's come down the pipe in the last year or so. Happy to answer any questions, but each of those items will also have reports when they come to the agenda as well.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I don't think there's any questions or comments. We'll just wait for more further information. Economic development tourism.
Peter's right, there are many red buttons on this thing. So for those of you I haven't met or have only spoken to briefly, my name is Tara Kirkpatrick and I'm the manager of economic development here at the county. And for the past year, I've, well, for the past year and a half or so, I've been supporting tourism as well. So currently, tourism reports to economic development. This is changing as of January, for those of you who are unaware. We'll both be working under Peter Young in the planning department, so it's a positive move and we're excited about the new relationships that's going to come from there. It has been an exceptionally busy year for both economic development and tourism. I've been in this role, as I said, since about a year and a half. And we've gotten up to speed on a number of projects. I gave a more robust report in the very hefty book that you have to read. So if there's any questions that I don't outline today, please feel free to ask or, and I'm happy to highlight those. I've put together more of a high rates, highlights reel for today, just of some of those projects that we've worked on. So one of the big pieces that we work on in economic development is business visitation. Often this is done in conjunction with economic development officers at the local level. It frequently has to do with either the regional incentives program, COVID relief projects, expansions and growth. There have been a few companies that have closed. I've helped with that process as have your local economic development officers. We haven't had many, to be honest. Most of our closures were related to age and succession as opposed to COVID relief and COVID issues. We've had a few that were somewhere in between the two, I guess you could say. But overall, our businesses have been growing and we've seen exceptional growth of both small and large businesses. We're attracting a lot of people from GTA, from Montreal, from neighboring regions. We've seen a huge input in terms of agritourism. I had a conversation with, at lunch about some of our new floral destinations. I want to say we've probably acquired over half a dozen floral destinations. So market gardeners who are now opening up their properties to the public to come and buy bouquets. They're doing subscriptions. They're working on new concepts. We have a new alpaca farm. We have a second alpaca farm that actually added in South Dundas this year. So we're at a total of, I think, three, although they come out of the woodwork. We find out about these great new businesses as they evolve and grow. So succession planning, labor. So the scarcity of labor has been the top concern among our employers, which is why you might have noticed in that report that I do sit on a number of local, local labor boards, as well as provincial labor boards. And we're all discussing the same thing. Where do we find people? Where do we steal people? How do we get them to work in our region? We've offered to support to new business ventures. So as you can imagine, new businesses typically do demand more attention than existing ones. Simply because they're just learning the ropes and they're trying to find out what supports are available to them. At left, you see Anna from Sunwheel Farms in Alexandria. She's a great example of a new Canadian who landed in Montreal, came to North Glengarry about five years later and said, oh my God, I found my home. This is where I, I wanted to be. And that's a great success story for us because it tells the story that we're hearing from a lot of new residents who find their homes here that they, they simply didn't find in metropolitan areas. And that's a story we have been trying to tell to others because it is one of the venues for us to grow our populations. I listed, just to smattering, this is certainly not inclusive of every new business that has landed in the area. You'll notice a lot of new bed and breakfasts, new farms, new experiences. We also have new industrial players. We have new service people. There's a gentleman I spoke to who's doing a knife sharpening business. We work closely with the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre and their young startups and entrepreneurs. And from there, we end up with dozens of inquiries because we are going through a period where we do have a lot of startups. And we also have a lot of residents and new residents who learned during the pandemic that they were in an industry that they did not want to pursue. And many of them have launched new businesses, which make up over 90% of the businesses in SDNG. Are those that are either owned and operated by a sole occupant or with one other person, often a family member assisting. Starter Company Plus, as I mentioned, is one of the tools of the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre. I had the honor of serving as a panelist this year. And you'll note that we were a major sponsor this year of SEBAC, which is the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre. And SEBAC serves roughly 50 to 60% of their candidates actually from, come from the counties. The other half come from Cornwall. So depending on the year, year to year, if you look at a 10-year average, we're right around 50, 51%. Labor and workforce development are something that I have, it's a rising concern across the board in all industries. So many of our industries are supporting attracting personnel from other countries. You're going to find that that's a rising strategy for many of them. One of the strategies that we supported this year was sponsoring a booth at the Montreal Job Fair. And we go to Montreal just because it's the largest of its kind within a, I would say probably a six-hour drive. So to go an hour to Montreal and have access to 25,000 candidates to potentially bring back to our industries is of great interest to us. I sponsored the booth. We were joined this year by representatives from Jobzone, from GAG, our Employment Services offices, as well as the township of North Glengarry had volunteered to come. I also sit on a number of those committees. As I mentioned, we work with the Ministry of Labor. We work with Jobzone, with GAG, with the local and provincial partners. As well as RTO9, which is our Regional Tourism Board, which received funding this year from FedDev specifically to look at the tourism and hospitality industry. And that had to do specifically with COVID. So they were the hardest-hit industry as a result of COVID. And with that support, they were able to offer a number of supports. So they did employment engagement sessions. They offered free training. They offered placement. They worked with a number of our tourism operators to help support them and see if there were ways that they could either retrain staff who are off work or find ways to encourage those industries. Medical Recruitment Initiative. So this is a committee that came from council. So last year, we had a number of our hospital partners come forward and speak to the concerns they had. They were looking at medical recruitment drives. They came to council and on a number of occasions were asking for funding. So I was asked by the CIO to find out what was going on. We have a lot of siloed projects happening across the counties. So I sat down with the City of Cornwall. I sat down with Glengarry Memorial Hospital. I've had conversations with Winchester Hospital. I've had initial conversations at South Dundas and South Stormont with the EDOs. And from this, we've, we know the issue is strong. So among all of our workforces, we've got about 45,000 people working in counties in Aquasasne and Cornwall. That's our workforce. 7,500 people represent the health sector. And just right now, we have 142 job postings across the board. So this is per the 2021 census data. And we know that this is going to continue to rise. We have a lot of challenges. We've got a lot of burnout in the health sector. And we just have people who have sought other career paths. Now more than other, there are opportunities and many people have left health because they could work somewhere else and not have that stress. One of the strategies that came from all of these meetings is in conversation with Cornwall's social, sorry, the Cornwall and Area Social Development Council. I had conversations with them. Last week, we actually met with the Great River Health Team. So something that's coming for early 2023 is a summit on health. So the county councillors, you all will be invited to attend. And it's going to be bringing together some of those major parties to say, what's going on? What are your challenges? Is there a way that we can pool our resources to work more closely together? So that when it comes to medical recruitment, we have a strategy that's more regional in approach as opposed to localized. And we are all trying to accomplish the same goals. From an economic development perspective, there are ways that we could support this. So Date My County was a huge resident attraction piece that came out this year. We had enormous success. So in its essence, Date My County is a marketing campaign. Contest was secondary to marketing. And as a marketing campaign, it had huge effect. So we ended up getting a national audience. It was picked up across Canada and it was seen around the world. We had applications from around 50 different countries, even though it was only open to Canadian residents. So I would say about 50 of those applications came from everywhere, from Hong Kong and Switzerland to a number of them from the Middle East, from people who were telling us that they wanted to start their Canadian dream here. They saw our approach and they liked it and they wanted to move here. And from those 177 applications, we did choose two finalists who were selected. They're going to be starting their campaign with us actually over the holidays. They're moving to the county next September just because of their own housing and employment conditions that they have right now. But I'm, I have added in a note to the 2023 budget to bring this campaign back and to try it one more time as a Date My County 2.0, but with a medical attractment, sorry, a medical recruitment spin. And I think that we can definitely attract a great deal of attention, which is what we need. So whether or not we end up with a couple of candidates, because I would look at reworking it so it's not one person selected, but a handful of smaller prize funds, what would happen is, is we would be telling the province and Quebec and Canada that this is a great place to work in the medical industry and that's the bigger piece. So if we get five candidates winning, say a $5,000 grant, that's great because we get five new RNs, RPMs or doctors. And we're supporting ongoing initiatives. We're not leading the medical recruitment for them. We're just helping support ongoing initiatives. But it's more about showcasing the region and continuing with what it is from our perspective. It is economic development for us to brand SDNG and showcase it, and that's what this would be. So you will see that note in the budget to return again. And I will note that we saved some money this year because we did get a lot of unexpected grant funds, which I can go over in a few minutes. So some of those grant funds included, just to note, that we had received some funding from RTO9. So RTO9 gave us money from FedDev through the Tourism Relief Fund that had actually paid for the entire cost of our video series this year. So we did roughly 15 videos, all of them paid for through that $100,000 fund. And I do want to switch out of here to show you one of the other pieces. So as part of those conversations on medical recruitment, I've started with Glengarry Memorial simply because they were the first that was ready. We are working our way around. And I'm going to show you just the 15-second video that was produced. And hopefully it will load and go on the right computer.
Here in SDG Counties, there's a lot of opportunities for families to get engaged and
as I said, technical difficulties are super fun. There we go. Yeah, I'll just want to. So one of the pieces that has been created this year is a 15-second video, just to showcase a little bit about one of the ways that we're going to be supporting these recruitment initiatives.
Here in SDG Counties, there's a lot of opportunities for families to get engaged and for physicians to practice.
So it just gives you a glimpse of some of the campaigns that we're working on. That's the very short one. So a 15-second video for us is typically used as an advertisement either on YouTube or on social media, and it can also be used through digital media. So what we did this year with the Date My County campaign is we actually had advertised with both Global and Bell Media. So using those sources, we were able to advertise on their digital non-skip videos. So if you ever watch TV online and it says you can't skip it, that's the videos that we advertise on. So they're annoying, but effective. We also utilized television for TV ads and we had some great pricing through both of those partners. And it was part of our budget for the campaign. And through those means, we had millions of views. So our estimate is around three and a half million viewers saw those videos. We're continuing the video series. You might have seen one on Global recently that was Endless Opportunities in SDG Counties, which is one of the branding themes that I've been using in terms of recruitment of all types of personnel. And I do intend to continue that series, starting with Upper Canada Creamery. So last week, I was visiting Josh and Ellen at Upper Canada Creamery. And we had an opportunity to shoot a Made in SDG series. So this is a branding campaign I intend to continue into 2023. Hit me with your ideas. I'm happy to get your emails on offerings of who I should be adding to the list. And the EDOs also have a long list of people that they'd like to be featured through this campaign. The goal is to produce at least six such videos this year. And continuing on a Made in SDG logo that had been created just prior to the pandemic. So you can see it's very similar. We have a Discover SDG, which is tourism. And the Made In is to focus on unique items to the counties, and we have a lot of them. And they were chosen because the Made in SDG idea actually came from Ellen Beaumont. She had come forward to my predecessor and said, we need something to put on our cream and our milk and our cheese. Can you guys do something with us? So from that idea sparked this logo, which for about a year as part of a pilot project, we actually paid for the stickers that were put on the cheese. And we're trying to work away from paying for the stickers, but giving them the rights to print the stickers. But this is a goal of showcasing the pride that we have in the region, but also showcasing the product and the companies, be they small or large. And I want to make sure that we get a little bit of both of those categories. So conferences, training, as you can imagine, we have a lot of networking and working group meetings. One of the most common that you'll hear of is our EDO working groups, or Economic Development Officers at the lower level. And the best thing that comes from that is the ability to pilot projects and see what works so that we can duplicate it in the other municipalities and see what doesn't work so that we can save you money by not duplicating them in the other municipalities. So we work closely together on everything from labor to events to activities, as well as attending numerous events and conferences and working with all of our government partners and non-government partners across the board. There's a lot of them. So as you will remember, SDG was a platinum sponsor of Ontario East this year. And I just wanted to note that the Ontario East Municipal Conference will be returning to Cornwall in all likelihood next September and will likely be a sponsor again for the coming event. And as you can see, it was then-Warden Karma Williams was speaking in the opening address to that event. The 2022 International Ploughing Match was an unexpected return this year, so we were very excited when it came to Kempville. It attracted 60 to 65,000 people and SDNG had participated as a sponsor. So you can see some of us there at the booth, where we had some great conversations with the many, many, many visitors. The RTO9 Tourism Relief Fund was the one I had alluded to earlier that was a surprise grant for us. So I had applied to this grant early last year and it was a COVID support system. So it's very rare funding. It's 100% funding of up to $100,000, of which we received $99,750. So we got as much money as we asked for and at the upper amount. So we were very fortunate to be able to sponsor those 13 tourism videos, three economic development videos that have had such a huge effect for us. And you're going to hear about them and you're going to see some of them when Karina does her presentation. She worked very closely and coordinated most of those tourism videos. And we also managed to purchase two dual-unit electric vehicle charging stations for outside of this building. So the four parking spaces closest to where you enter from the Warden's Building are going to be converted to electric vehicle charging stations. And the cost of those units plus is roughly $20,000. It was another $20,000 for an engineering study that was recently completed, 100% of which will be paid for. Remember that fact when Ben comes to you and talks to you about installing of the electric vehicles and the lights in the parking lot? That will become part of the budgetary measures just because we weren't able to do the completion due to the winter season, which is why instead of purchasing one dual unit, we took the cost and purchased two. And that's going to support the corporation in terms of tourism attraction to the old jail downstairs, our historic SDG jail, as well as future fleet uses. The Regional Incentives Program continues to be very, very active. We had a total of 19 projects this year, which amounted to a total investment of $319,000. We invest $250,000 a year into the program and the overages from unspent funds are able to roll back in. Due to COVID and some projects that unfortunately didn't move forward, we took the remaining funds and reinvested them. The total construction value of that 319 is over $2 million in its construction. As you can see, one of the biggest ones this year was Lost Villages Brewing, which went through a significant facelift. There's many, many others that I'd love to show you at some point. Emerging sectors for us, one of the big ones is the cruise line industry. So we have been working with RTO9, which is our, as I said, Regional Tourism District 9, which we belong to. It's essentially the Ministry of Tourism. And we are working to attract cruise lines to SDNG and Cornwall. And we are hopeful that we will get more interest from those, that industry. And the two specific areas that they are looking at are the deepwater docks in Morrisburg and the deepwater docks in Cornwall, which are already well-equipped to actually greet. So we are more competitive than some other areas that don't have deepwater docks, would have to use smaller launches to offload their people. This would have an effect on all of SDNG, first because we would be able to offer more circuits within SDNG. And secondly, because typically these cruise ships purchase their food from within the areas they land at, so it would have a huge impact on our area farmers. The second emerging sector is the film industry. So I sit on the working group for the Southeastern Ontario Production Accelerator Fund. And the goal is to work with the feds and the province to try and create a credit system to attract more film industry to Eastern Ontario. And that's all. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Tara. That's quite exciting news that you provided to us. Oh, there's more. Yes. Well, still, I hold true to those words. Karina, please.
So, good afternoon. I'm Karina Belage, the Tourism Coordinator, and I will try to keep this quick and to the point. I really want to show you a lot of what we've done this year. So I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to load up here. Perfect. So I'll start with the tourism videos that Tara mentioned. We've done three feature videos for summer, fall and winter. And we were really successful working with Bell Media and Global Kingston to create several robust commercial campaigns throughout the year. We've had a total audience impression so far of close to 4 million views and our next winter flight is scheduled for January 16th. So just a sneak peek at that commercial.
Magic. It's all around. From the Open Road and beyond. These are the counties of SDG. Where winter is a celebration. So come, let's wander to Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry. Just off the Open Road. Come explore SDG Counties this winter. Endless discoveries.
So that will air on both Bell Media, CTV Ottawa, as well as Global Kingston. So through Bell Media, we were able to get quite a few value ads. In our first flight, we had a on-air contest campaign that started in May. So we were able to get 1,305 contest entries and almost 400 opt-ins for tourism. Second, we were able to leverage the morning show live on location. So CTV Ottawa crew came down to the counties. They filmed four segments and it aired live October 10th. So we've highlighted four businesses. There was the Lost Villages Brewery, Upper Canada Playhouse, Split Rock Farms Alpacas and the Abinmore Berry Farm. So here is a little clip of that.
For the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry, I started my visit at the Lost Villages Brewery. It's a brand-new spot in the community. We got a tour just before it opened. Take a look. Here at the Lost Villages Brewery with these two guys, John and Matt. John, you not only, Matt, you not only make the beer, but you also make the building as well, here I see.
I did, yeah. I've been a little involved.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Okay, Lost Villages Brewery. Where did that name come from, Matt?
So the Lost Villages Brewery takes its name after the seaweed flooding that happened in 1959. So back then, when they were building the Hydro Dam, they flooded the area and we lost several communities. So the whole idea behind the brewery is to commemorate the lost villages. So we've named a lot of our beers after the, some of the villages and some of the things that happened around the area.
Oh, that's incredible.
So up next, we also wanted to focus the videos online on social media. So we applied to the RTO9 Drive for Excellence Program for a summer marketing campaign. We were able to showcase the region through video with the end goal of creating awareness and promoting visitation. So the campaign ran from July 8th to August 31st. We leveraged YouTube for that main video and social for the smaller vignettes. So we were able, within the reporting period, we generated 1.4 million impressions, 20, over 23,000 clicks and almost 400,000 video views. Another partnership opportunity that came up was with Destination Ontario and we helped coordinate bringing the Weather Network to SDG Counties. So they came to the area for two days. They filmed some B-roll and then were live on location from downtown Alexandria. So 12 segments aired live during the morning show from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. It featured live demos, interviews and B-roll from the previous day. These 12 segments repeated for a total of 66 minutes of airtime. And as you can see, we reached a national audience of almost 17 million and an add value of almost 465,000. So a quick clip from that.
Very glad to join us on the Weather Network Thursday, August the 4th. We've got Kebir McGarria, Jordan Reed on location. She'll tell you exactly where. I'm Chris Murphy with you and live on location. So Jordan, I was looking at the rundown that you were providing for us. I mean culinary delights. You're talking about wineries and vineyards and even some alpacas as well. What gives?
Absolutely. It's totally a jam-packed show today. We are in downtown Alexandria. It's just about an hour from Ottawa, southeast, and we are proving today that you do not have to go far to get away. Of course, when you're at a staycation, you have to find a beautiful place to stay. I'm with Natalie.
Just a little snippet, but we have them live on our YouTube. We'll have a channel playlist dedicated and there was about eight clips from the Weather Network. Up next is our Christmas in the Counties campaign. So it's our most recent one. We do it annually and in partnership with Move 100. So it launched November 14th. It was a three-week campaign, which featured commercials, 15-second on-air occasions and live announcer reads. So listeners were encouraged to shop local, visit our site. In total, we had 200, or 2,024 entries and 459 opt-ins. And the grand prize featured 20 local businesses, which the announcers often read and highlighted during their time. So just a quick 15-second commercial clip of that.
Take a break from the hustle and bustle of the city and experience Christmas in the counties. Explore the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry and visit the local shops for unique Christmas gift ideas. It may be cold outside, but you'll find nothing but a warm reception in SDG Counties, where ontario began.ca.
So I'll move on to our print. So starting with the Discover Guide, similar to last year, this year, or 2023, we'll be printing 40,000 copies. 20,000 of those are distributed by CTM Media along the 401 corridor into Ottawa and into Montreal. The remaining 20,000 are distributed locally to businesses. We do some direct mail campaigns. And then the plan for 2023 will be to do some trade shows, which we haven't done in the past. So we have five lined up that we'll do in combination with the city of Cornwall for next year. As far as tourism advertising, here is a few examples of some print advertising we've done. So there's a local food spread in Edible Ottawa. We've done a cycling ad in Ontario by bike, a beaches ad in the Prescott Russell Guide, and then the Christmas in the Counties ad in the Cornwall Living Winter and Holiday With the videos and more traffic going to our website, we really wanted to make sure that we had up-to-date content. So whether it was blog posts, keeping the event calendar up to date, adding our new videos to the site, we also created an itinerary page. So there's 10 itineraries that are interactive on the website and then we also have the print and social ready files. Along with that, we created a new illustrative tourism map, so with the help of our designer, Susan Mariner. So we found this map was just a new, fun, interactive way to highlight the tourism events and attractions in our region. It's a marketing piece that we use at trade shows and it's versatile for other things such as contesting. As you can see, we did the coloring contest in the summer. So we also have a video produced for that that we hope to eventually add on to the ending of the tourism videos and the county videos. So finally, I'll sum up with our summer students and the jail. This year, we had four summer students. They operated the jail tours and also acted as mobile cycling ambassadors. Funding was received from both the federal and provincial government. Up to, it was 12,100 that we received and the goal for 2023 is to again apply for that funding and next year hire five students just to better assist managing the jail and attending events and attractions throughout the county. So this was the first year the jail has been open since COVID-19 and we had a really successful season. In total, we had 1,477 visitors through the door with a revenue of $10,435. We also had souvenirs for sale, so that was an additional 550 in revenue and we plan to augment that for next year. We hosted several special events throughout the season. There were some free events, including a first responders' day, doors open, and then we had our students who put on some murder mystery nights and as well came back around Halloween for the haunted tours. And then one of the most popular events was the paranormal investigations in the jail. So we continued to partner with Haunted Walks Ottawa and Phantoms of Yore to offer these investigations. So it was over four weeks in the summer, which we saw a total revenue of over 11,000 from that venture. So we're starting to spread out and do some corporate events and holiday parties as well. That was everything. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Karina, for that presentation. Open it up to questions and comments for members of council. Seeing none, I think you covered all the bases and it's quite exciting to see all the information provided today. I really do appreciate that. I'm sure we all do. So thank you. Todd, the historic, the historic tour update, please.
Thank you very much and through you, Warden Fraser, it's my pleasure to be here. It's also my pleasure to be the last report you're going to have to sit through this afternoon. So thank you all for indulging us with your time. It's my pleasure through you, Warden Fraser, to also bring with me Pierre Giroux. Pierre is the artist who worked on this project. All of the fun stuff you're going to see in my presentation is really as a result of the hard work that Pierre did. So with your permission, Warden Fraser, I'll just go through the report and advise council of where we're at with things. So last October, the 18th in fact, council was updating on a plan to create the SDG Historic Tour. And that will consist of a series of 18 plaques that will be installed in select locations throughout local municipalities within the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry. Behind me are the finished plaques that are going up on throughout the region. And I also brought some actual props that are here for you to look at at the table. So the first phase of the tour is going to see three plaques installed in each of the six municipalities in SDG. These plaques will honor events and landmarks and stories from our past. These bilingual plaques, as you can see, include a central painting, historic photos, as well as verbiage that have been modeled on similar plaques that have been installed in the city of Cornwall, as well as the Lost Villages Museum in South Stormont. And really what we're looking to do is create a regional tour that augments the county brand, which is where Ontario began. $50,000 was budgeted for this project. We were on budget and that comes from COVID funding. All the materials produced for this tour will become the property of the United Counties of SDG and will be made accessible for future use and adaptation and sale at our discretion. A series of follow-up projects are being planned for this project as well. In addition to the creation of the plaques, we're going to create a roster of all historic plaques in SDG, not necessarily related to this tour, but any historic plaque in SDG will be put on a county roster that will be available on our website. So if historians and other individuals are looking for historic plaques, they'll be able to go to our website, click on map. It'll open up a picture of the historic plaque and tell where it is and what it's all about. In addition to the plaques, there's going to be some geocaching amenities that are created next year. An online GIS-based map that will show where these plaques are. Once again, you click on it, open it up, it'll show you the plaque and what it'll really do is offer us an opportunity to tell more of the story behind the plaques. As you can see with these examples, real estate is really at a premium. So there are certain components of the stories we're trying to tell, we just don't have the room to do. So we'll be able to do that online. The, I really want to take some time, Warden Fraser, just a few seconds really to mention some individuals who helped out with this project. If it wasn't for partnerships that we created with local historians, local residents and local agencies, we wouldn't be sitting here to tell you about this project today. Those individuals and agencies includes Susan Peters at Dundas County Archives, Ian Bowring, Ronald Lajoie, Donna Crookshank, Alan Donald at Glengarry County Archives, Don Smith at the Cornwall Community Museum, Yvonne Menard, Nancy McIntosh, Jim Brownell, Craig Stevenson, the South Glengarry Heritage Advisory Committee, the North Glengarry Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, Clive and Francis Marin, Bill Smurl, the Chesterfield District Historical Society and finally the Mohawk Council of Aquasasne. As I said, without input from these individuals, we are not historians, we are not experts in local history, but we reached out to those individuals and they were more than happy to give us the material to tell our story. So installation of the plaques will take place in the spring of 2023. Right now, all the plaques are sitting in a plywood box at one of our patrol garages. They're going to spend the winter there and then they'll be installed in the spring. And just finally, your worship, to take advantage of the holiday season, we've also created a little revenue stream by way of selling wall calendars related to the tour. They're $20 each. We're anticipating revenue in the neighborhood of about $10,000. And what we'll do with that money is reinvest in the project and help offset some of the costs of installation next spring. Just one other quick point, since this report was prepared, we've had some further internal discussions about how to proceed with this project. It's our goal to roll this out in two more phases over 2023 and 2024. You'll note that in the report, we talked about doing nine plaques again next year. We're not quite sure if that's going to be feasible. We're going to have to look at some budget issues and determine how we want to roll this project out in the following two years, but it is our goal to continue to do this. I was at a conference not long ago where it was talking about local history and history specific to Eastern Ontario. And what they were suggesting at this conference is the biggest untapped market that we have in our region is history. Everybody wants to know these stories, but there's a challenge out there around how do you tell these stories and how do you in fact monetize it to make it feasible? And so what we've been able to do with this project is really determine that there is a market, people are hungry for this information and we're only too happy to start telling some of these stories. So with that, Warden Fraser, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Todd, and thank you for your contribution with your artwork. It really does highlight our area and it's wonderful stuff and I do appreciate it, I'm sure we all do. Counselor Williams, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to acknowledge Tara, Karina and Todd, the work on economic development, tourism and plaques is truly impressive. You're doing amazing work across the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Majesty.
Counselor McGillis.
Just want to say again, Pierre, I'm glad some of my artistic talent rubbed off on you. Pierre is a cousin, second cousin of mine. His mom, Lorraine, is my first cousin. You always do great work. I followed you when you lived in BC, all the great talent that you've done. And we're very proud of all the work you've done for us. Thank you. And the Lost Villages too.
Yes, and so Todd, I think inclusion, maybe not inclusion, but my conclusion is that this project, it's such an important project. I've expressed to you many times my feelings about capturing history. I know I've had conversations with fellow council members about the need to keep and capture and celebrate our history and this endeavor truly does that. I'm looking forward to more of the same. I'm not sure which way we're going to find ways to fund it. Maybe there's going to, an interest from the lower-tier municipalities to partner with it to ensure that it continues moving forward, but I think it's absolutely necessary that we continue supporting and supporting the capturing and celebrating our history. And again, thank you very much for this wonderful project.
Thank you, Warden Fraser.
Through you, the motion is moved by Counselor Landry, seconded by Counselor Bergeron and reads that council proceed in camera pursuant to section 239, 2E of the Municipal Act 2001. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, legal matter.
We've all heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed, seen, none? Seeing none?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, the ratification bylaw, please.
This is the motion, just to reconvene, it's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor McGillis, that counsel rise and reconvene without reporting.
We heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried.
Ratification bylaws, moved by Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor Laundrie, that bylaw number 5382, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. At this moment, before we move on, Madam Clerk, I'd like to do things in front of me. I want to thank the new counsel for being so kind and considerate and bearing with me as I muddled my way through this first meeting. I do appreciate your patience. To all those in the viewing public and those in attendance, thank you very much for your patience as well. But more importantly than that, this is the last meeting, and the first and only opportunity I've had to sit and stare at the back of Tim. But this is, I'm glad I've had the opportunity. This is Tim's last meeting with us, the last time we'll be seeing him in this role, steering the ship, if you would. And, Tim, on behalf of the council of SDG, on behalf of me, thank you very much for your time, and I think he deserves a big round of applause. To Tim.
I've never had a standing O before, so... Yeah, I liked it, actually. No, I just, I don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to say, you know, to the county itself and to everybody that's associated with the county, you know, whether it's councillors, staff, people that live here, my friends, everybody, I really appreciate the opportunities that this organization has given me for 12 years, and to come back home where I grew up, and to finish my career here. It's been great, and it's been a great ride, and I just, I thank everybody so much. Thank you.
Oh, I should open the floor up to comments. Questions, comments from members of council. Counselor McDonald.
I'll just say quickly, thanks, Tim, for everything you've done, being Warden twice, having your leadership and friendship as well, was very important to me, and wish you luck. Yeah.
Tim, it was a pleasure working with you this last year. It was fun, and it was interesting, and it was a great experience. I'm happy for you that you're retiring, you're young and vibrant, you're going to be able to go off and do some great things in the future years, and you've left us a good, steady ship, you really have, and I don't think just anyone can say that, so congratulations to you.
I guess I haven't had the opportunity as Warden, but I did sit at the table for four years, and just the fact to be able to make a phone call and look at you as not really more of as a friend, and you're still young, I think you got a long retirement. You only have white hair up to here, so you've still got a ways to go, but no, best of luck and enjoy the time.
I guess we're going around the table. When you said you'd never had a standing O before, I think that's because you play the bagpipes. No, Tim, I didn't really get a chance to meet you, although when we first started, you helped us hire a CAO, and I think you did a fantastic job with that, so you're not only just a good CAO, but you spawn off good CAOs as well, so congratulations.
Tim, I haven't been at the stables till today, basically, but we have seen you around, and the local counties have appreciated the guidance that came from the upper tier, and it's going to be good to have you in our small community of Williamstown a little more often, and look forward to seeing you on the street.
So, Tim, I haven't had the opportunity to sit at this table, but I met Tim about 14 years ago, 13 years ago, Town of Perth, we did this fabulous job together on Wilson Street, and it was instant respect and professionalism from you, Tim, and that was infectious throughout that project, so congratulations.
So, 17 days inauguration, five hours and 15 minutes of the first meeting? Thanks a lot. Thanks for lunch. Congratulations, thank you.
I don't have much to say either, because I missed the first meeting because I had the flu, but I really did enjoy your bagpipes. Yeah, and I hope we see you in a kilt again, some other celebration. Okay.
I'm new to this table as well, obviously, but thank you, Tim, for everything you've done. Congratulations on your retirement, and I wish you the best in the next chapter.
I guess I have to echo everybody's comments. Tim, I just want to say thank you for all your help and your leadership that you've shown over the past few, many years. I worked with quite a few CEOs... and your leadership that you've shown over the past few, many years. I worked with quite a few CEOs in my time, and I'm just going to say that you're one of the best ones of all that I've ever worked with. I mean, I worked with quite a few good CEOs, but you're always there. You're always there to answer the calls and actually get back to everybody, and I really appreciate all your help throughout those years. And I wish you all the best luck in your, your retirement. I know you're not going to retire, probably get into something one day or two here during the weeks, but yeah, you have plans? I'm trying to squeeze it out of him, but he won't let it out, eh? But anyway, thank you very much and I wish you all the best in your retirement years. And you can dye your hair gray now, just to look a little distinguished.
Well, I appreciate counsel for allowing me to force that upon you, but I'm sure you wanted to express your thoughts. Madam Clerk.
Yep, and just before we adjourn, if I can, Mr. Warden, I'd just like to thank you too. Tim, on behalf of the director team here at the county, just thank you for the wonderful leadership over the years. We've always felt supported. We could lean on you, we could count on you. You've always led by example and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Laundrie, seconded by Counselor McGillis, that counsel adjourned to the call of the chair.
We've all heard the question, all those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Opposed, seeing none, that's carried.